Winchester Planning Board. We have a quorum here this evening. So why don't I do a roll call so everyone knows that we have a quorum? So if planning board members would respond present when I call their name, Yicheng Scott?
Present.
Cheryl Wolf. Cheryl Wolf, you're muted.
Yep, here I am, present.
Sally Dale.
Present.
And Dab Jerry is present, so we have a quorum. We also have with us this evening, our newly appointed member Kurt Spring, welcome Kurt. Kurt's not yet sworn in, so he is here, I guess, as an observer this evening and hopefully we'll get that swearing in done by our next meeting. So just a reminder to everyone that we are being recorded, we're being recorded on Wind Cam, thank you Wind Cam. And we're also being recorded via Zoom. We also have with us our recording secretary Nancy Pocari, hi there Nancy. And we have with us a full complement of the Conservation Commission, who we'll be having a joint meeting with at seven forty. As well as Brian Manter, our Assistant Town Engineer, Elaine Vreeland, who is Elaine, I always forget what your title is, Conservation Commission Agent?
Yeah, that's good. Conservation Commission Agent, it's fine.
Okay, excellent. So why don't we dive right into our brief updates and then we will join with the Concom at seven forty. So Brian, you want to lead off with our updates?
Sure. One, the Waterfield Lot Task Force met last night and they're going to meet again on the twentieth of September and then the thirtieth of September, which is when they'll get close to finalizing some type of a report. We talked mainly this last time about parking and revenue to the town. When we learned a couple of interesting things related to the revenue that the memo from Lynn Sweet that said one, one recommendation that she's going to make that would, that everybody found interesting was that if we took eight of the units that were eighty percent of AMI and made them sixty percent of AMI, so we made them affordable to a lower, a lower income that we would actually be able to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in upfront payment from the, from the developer. So this was just more, that was, that was one interesting note of her memo, there were a lot of interesting things in her memo. The other we were talking about was parking and the really defiesability of parking over the Abrojona, which was found to be obviously quite difficult. So we went through that exercise, but they're beginning to prioritize. So we hopefully will be able to do that in the next two meetings. The other thing is the Downtown Improvement Action Plan, which is a public meeting that's related on this kind of mini parking study. And that's taking place a week from tonight, actually, on the twenty first. And you can find that information out through the, through the select board if you're interested in, and that's really looking at the short term due to the MBTA station closing and how that affects parking and other things in the public realm in the Center Business District and around the, around the downtown. One thing that I will, I guess I'll, I'll stop here and with this last one, talking about today I had, we have our, we have monthly subregion meetings, so this is within MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Councils, their whole entire region is a hundred and one cities and towns on the eastern side, you know, near Boston. And within that hundred and one, there are subregions, we're in the NSPC, the North Suburban Planning Council, which includes Woburn, Redding, North Redding. Escaping me all of them, there are six of them. And we talked very briefly about the idea of having a master plan implementation committee. And what was unique about what, what we were planning to do for this town meeting was that a lot of the other towns that either went through a master plan recently or about to go through a master plan or even one went through some five to 10 years ago wished they had a implementation committee that was not the planning board and that was something else that was driving, they wished they had that because basically people kind of cherry picked what they wanted. So it was kind of an interesting conversation we had today about that. And then I guess I was just going to leave the, the rest up, the few minutes potentially if, for those who didn't have the opportunity to hear about Kirk Spring's background. I was hoping that maybe we could give two minutes and he could just tell us a little bit about, about his background and why he's, he's here for those who couldn't, who couldn't be, be there last night.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. If I could just insert one brief announcement, which is so the next Waterfield Lot Task Force meeting is going to be next Monday, I believe?
Correct, the twentieth.
And is that going to overlap at all with the downtown action? Oh wait, you said it was a week from today, which is
Nine twenty-one.
Right, so, so the, but on the night of the twentieth is, so the Waterfield Task Force is Monday, five to seven. And then from seven to eight, there is a small group that is meeting related to the the LR RP, the Rapid Recovery Plan, the Local Rapid Recovery Plan Grant that we got in the form of technical assistance to help the businesses downtown. So that's, that's, that's only for a small, select focus group and some people are, are, that's not a big public hearing, hearing. But then the parking meeting is at seven o'clock on the twenty-first.
Okay, thank you. I, I mixed up Tuesday and Monday, so my apologies. So Kurt, please, welcome to the planning board and why don't you introduce yourself to us and explain how you managed to get messed up with us?
Sure, yeah, thank you. But yeah, personally, I've, I've been, my wife and I moved to Winchester in two thousand thirteen. We have three children, two boys, seven, nine and a seven-month-old girl. And so, you know, are, are really happy here, really committed to the community. You know, I've coached soccer, football, baseball, you name it. So, so pretty involved here. And then I think professionally, my background is that I have, I did a degree in, in a dual degree in economics and urban studies from Haverford College, and then I got an MBA at BC. And I've been working the past eighteen years basically in various forms of commercial real estate that have been, I've, I've been on the debt side, I've actually worked from Affordable Housing Syndicator in Boston and I now work as a partner at a small private equity firm in Cambridge. Although we invest, you know, all over the US and tend to invest mostly in multifamily, we do have a lot of investment in affordable housing as well as other property types, so I, I've always just been really interested in, you know, real estate development, planning, built environments, architecture. And then I think the only other thing that's, this may be slightly interesting about my background relative to this is that I've always volunteered for Habitat for Humanity. In high school and college, I organized groups to go, in high school to Lawrence, Massachusetts, then in college to Philly. And then after when I moved to Boston, I volunteered on the Family Selection Committee for the Greater Boston Chapter of Habitat Humanity, which meant I went and interviewed families who had applied and then later became the Chair of that committee and then was later invited to join the board. So I'm on the board for Habitat Greater Boston. And I'm, I'm really excited to be part of this group because I, like I said right at the beginning, you know, my family is really committed to Winchester, we love the town and would love to see it continue to grow and evolve in a really, you know, thoughtful way for, for the community. So really, really excited.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and we are excited to have you on board. So I think we're, we're actually on time right now. So our, our next thing on our agenda is we're going to have a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission and I guess Zeke, you have to start your, your side of the, of the hearing or the meeting, rather.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah, thanks, everybody for your time. We had a few agenda items to discuss tonight, but I think it just globally, it makes sense to have more regular meetings between our two boards. I think there's some overlapping responsibilities and I think it would be great to nail down an order of what, who goes first in terms of certain hearings and certain processes. I'd like to introduce our, our motivations of what the Concom does and what our goals are, but I think that other people on the board can also speak to that probably more eloquently than I can. Our job as a volunteer organization is to basically execute the Wetland Protection Act in the jurisdiction of Massachusetts. But our primary goal, because conservation commissions started before the Wetland Protection Act, were to preserve and promote open space and access to that open space. And so since we have a dwindling amount of open space in our town, I think it makes sense to promote those small open spaces as best as possible. And so that is part of our reinvigoration of our commission. We do get burdened by a lot of notices of intent because the town used to be called Waterfield. So that's, that's difficult for us to follow our other motivations, although what we're going to try to talk to you about today is not wetland protections per se, but more importantly, just access to open space and how that jives with planning, the planning board's motivations as well. I believe we're supposed to be talking tonight about the potential of implementing a tree bylaw and how that our two commissions can work together towards a common goal to keep this town a green community and not lose as many trees as we're losing every year. Dave Miller, maybe you could speak to that more or in also anyone else would like to chime in on other motivations that we may have for what we'd like to see as a template for a more regular meeting discussed with you guys so we can share our ideas. Also, of course, we're, we're willing to hear your criticisms or ideas of how we can implement our roles better, so feel free to chime in however you feel appropriate.
Well, thanks. Why don't, just in terms of organization of the meeting, why don't we have the Concom people go first and then we can respond?
That makes sense. Sometimes I play MC and some of my commission members are more on point. Dave Miller, I, I assume that we, you've been planning on driving some pieces of this.
Well, yeah, yeah, thank you. So I run David Miller. Just expand just for, you know, two seconds on a point Zeke was making. Those of us from the Conservation Commission, you know, have found ourselves over the last few years very much burdened. And that's not even an inaccurate word with dealing with notices of intent and regulatory matters, which are our responsibility owing to the Wetland Protection Act. Over the last few months, we've sort of made a concerted effort to take a, a big step back from that and go to the, the law which actually created conservation commissions a full ten years before the Wetlands Protection Act even existed. And, and, and that had us protecting natural resources. It's where the concept of a resource as related to the Wetlands Protection Act comes from. And, and making those resources available while protecting them to our community members. And so we put a lot of effort into that and some of you may be familiar with a recent step we took in that direction was town, the town forest, which came under the heading of the Town Forest Committee, was, was transferred by a vote of the Select Board. It's presumptive to the oversight of the Conservation Commission. That turns out there's a meeting of, a vote of town meeting required to make that official, but that's a step we're taking so that that particular resource will sort of come under our general purview and emphasis on the resource aspect of it. But one of the reasons that I'm here tonight is to talk about what we're considering. Zeke made reference to it, an urban forest is the actual phrase we, we think we're going to want to use in the long term. Urban forest bylaw, which gets at the protection of not only the public shade trees in town, which are already protected, but a much broader swath of trees, including those which are on private property in terms of their protection and whatever possible enhancement as well. Because I think as we all know, trees are a critical resource to our aesthetic as well as our climate-based environment and we're losing a lot of that as a result of just normal tree mortality, but I think more notably, and this is where the planning board has particular interest as a result of development where most development means loss of trees. And so efforts to replace those and improve what is really not just trees, but when viewed from above and perhaps the most portrait metric about trees is that the urban forest or the urban forest tree canopy. So I'll leave it at that right this moment.
So, Dab, we don't explicitly have a presentation in mind. And so I'm not sure exactly how we're going to hold the floor, other than maybe to promote questions of what you guys think of possibly a, a concept of how to, to integrate a law that of protecting our canopies to, which enables significant benefits to the town. And how we can balance personal property rights and benefits to the whole town. Maybe anyone on the board might want to opine on that.
Yeah, I think that is a, I know that there has been an informal working group between the planning board and the Conservation Commission. For a few, we're, we're sort of on hiatus now, but we went at it for a few months earlier this year, where we were looking at what actually, what sort, it was, it was a very research-based collaboration where we looked at existing urban forest or tree protection bylaws across the country in different settings, rural versus urban. We spoke with a number of the tree wardens from neighboring towns. And so we, we really, what came, what I think we discovered in that is that this is a fairly complex issue. Especially if you are looking at the urban forest, all of the trees, all of town is a single ecosystem so that you are concerned about more than just the public shade trees on town property. There are some very complicated issues dealing with property rights, as you mentioned. Also how we define, you know, which trees are important for preservation. How we, what are the metrics we would use to determine our loss or our gain. So there, it's a lot of, there are a lot of things that work into it. We also have the benefit of, of the expertise of Peter Wild, who runs the Boston Tree Preservation, who is an enormously knowledgeable person about these things. So I would hope that we would be, we would continue in a much more public way in terms of we would start setting up hearings and have some public meetings so we could listen to what the town members, town residents have to say and where we could start making decisions about priorities and policies that we would want to have in the, the bylaw and setting some sort of a timeline for when we would want to have something going before a town meeting. I think if we, if we set a date and then we work backwards from that, that would give us a, a schedule for when things would have to be done. So that's how I would, I, I, that's my personal experience of what, what's been happening in terms of the urban forestry bylaw. And Heather Hannan was the other person who's no longer with us, who Kurt has stepped in for, who was the other member of the planning board who was on that committee on that sub, whatever we're going to call a working group. So I think I said too much, I spoke too much, I may not have said too much, but I spoke. So if anyone else wanted to jump in, please.
I, I'll just add a little bit, I think we could put a, perhaps, do you have a little bit sharper focus on what you're saying? You know, it's informal conversations that we've had over the last few weeks as we think, you know, seek to reinvigorate this discussion to the point of actually putting a finishing date, if you will, on that discussion. I think there's some hope that we would present a bylaw to town meeting as soon as fall of twenty twenty-two for consideration and a vote. And so then as Dab said, working backwards from that, certain hallmark dates emerge, you know, a date by which this has to go to town council for scrubbing and turning into actual acceptable bylaw language and backing up from that some dates where we would want to have meetings in which, you know, interested members of the public were invited to chat with the working group to, you know, share their thoughts and ideas as to how this can best be in the first hand structured and secondhand. And this is where the conversations with the other town tree wardens was relevant, you know, implemented successfully and managed to the benefit of all. So that's sort of the shape that was taken and as we had that conversation, then another further on issue was, so who would be members of this working group? Is, is, I think we now accept, it's taken on a level, level of concreteness and reality and defined purpose that we probably need to follow open meeting law rules to both schedule and hold meetings. So with that level of formality added, it seemed like it made sense to have a certain element of formality to the membership of this working group and whatnot. And so I think, you know, certainly already members of the Conservation Commission as well as the planning board have participated. So the question becomes, is that where it ends or does it make sense to add invite? Because it would, everyone knows what we're doing, so probably invitation, invite people to this group. For example, a member or two of the DPW. We made reference to the permanent shade, permanent street tree, permanent shade, street tree committee. And that actually turns out most of the members are town employees, there's very few actually volunteers at this point in time. So those members may or may not make sense, but it's almost equivalent to inviting a DPW in any case. But then there's other committees who may be interested in participating in climate action, for example. My wife Ruth participated for a good number of meetings when we were meeting in the spring, so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I think we might also consider opening up to having people have a couple of seats reserved for people from the community who aren't on any town boards to make sure that we have essentially an outside not outside in terms of views, but some outside of government so that we make sure that we're getting the pulse of the community there.
Yeah, but I agree, but you know, I'm a volunteer, I don't work for the government in Winchester, I volunteer. So and so do everyone on, I believe, the planning board either, unless you're taking a paycheck.
I have not discovered that in my bank account yet.
Right, right.
But, but there is certainly, there are certainly, since we're dealing with the issue or possibly the issue of property rights, I think that it's important that there is transparency in what we're doing and representation for someone who you are, you are a selected, you are an appointed board, we are an elected board. But I think there is sufficient concern in Winchester about the role of town government, whether it be volunteer or not in terms of transparency and I keep using that word, but I, I think I want to say responsibility towards the town members. So I think this is something for discussion. I don't know that we have to come up with an agreement right this evening as to what the makeup of this board is, unless, unless we just made it, unless it's so simple, we can just jump into it right now and get it done. Any input from the planning board members?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, please.
So I guess I'm I'm thinking about not necessarily understanding how the work that we do in terms of planning is related to urban forest and maybe it's just the, the use of the word urban that's kind of throwing me off a little bit, David. I'm sort of tree bylaws probably a little more in the realm of how I think the planning board and our experience with site review and, and times that, that we actually push back on projects that are maybe taking down too many trees. I know Dab's been a huge proponent of that and, and so I'm wondering how is this in some way that the planning board supports your efforts with sort of anonymous but firsthand sort of experience with trees in our line of work? Or I, I guess I'm just kind of trying to really understand that the interface other than creating another committee that, that then, you know, represents people like-minded in terms of preserving, in terms of tree preservation, so.
So, so good questions, of course. I, I guess I would say tree bylaw as a title sort of looks at it from the perspective of what we're trying to get done in the moment, if you will. Urban forest or urban tree canopy bylaw seeks to get at it from the perspective of what we're trying to achieve long-term, right? So there's sort of two different ways to, to think about it and clearly the title is, is totally up for discussion and perhaps even debate. Ultimately, it's the language on paper, which is the, the part that's I think the most important element to this whole thing. And at least in one call it configuration that we were discussing, the, let's call it tree bylaw for this moment, would lead to the creation of a tree bylaw committee who ultimately was charged. And that would not necessarily perhaps not even be the same as this working group putting the bylaw together. That would be a group which, you know, did everything from, think about how to protect and enhance trees to, again, in certain configurations of what the bylaw is, adjudicate issues as to what trees are protected or what strategies are to plant additional trees. So there's a fairly, you know, potentially comprehensive role the committee has. And this isn't the best time to get into it, to be sure, but the other towns around us, Lexington, Arlington, Concord, a variety of others have already extensive and well-thought-out tree bylaws in place, which get at many of these issues already.
And Brian, you were going to make a comment and I just want to point out that we are close to eight P M., which is when apparently we're supposed to move to our next agenda item on the planning board, but Brian, please go ahead.
Yeah, well, that was, that was actually what I was going to say is that the, what's really going to happen, hopefully in the next several minutes, is that the, that two people from both the planning board will either volunteer themselves and two people from the Conservation Commission. And then these four amongst several others potentially, obviously that, that will be determined is basically going to study all of the things that have been discussed, that it would be a subcommittee that would, and with, with the end result of being some type of legislation. Like, like David said, some type of legis, legislation, uh, the fall of next year. So are there, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll give it back to you, Dab, but basically we are now looking for two volunteers from the planning board and then two volunteers from the Conservation Commission to come together to become a sub.
Right. And I just want to have a, a real quick reply to one of your, one of your own questions, Cheryl. And that is, where does this fit in with essentially the planning board? I believe that was one of your questions. And I think what's important is the planning board is concerned with the built environment and it's concerned with sustainability of our community as part of our long-term plans and certainly having a, a vibrant and sustainable natural environment in which trees are an incredibly important part of that is, I think, key to livability in Winchester. So I think there's a direct link to that. And I also want to say, going back to initial comments that both Zeke and David made about the renewed emphasis of the Conservation Committee on their on protect, protection and promotion of open space, I'm really thrilled to hear that. For so many years, I've always thought of Conservation Committee as being trapped by its duties under the Wetlands Protection Act. And having you surface as a, a, a champion of open space is really quite, quite welcome from my perspective. And I think we can work well with you on a number of those issues because that is key, I think, to long-term planning in town. So in terms of moving on to drafting a few people for this next version of this, this subcommittee, I know, I, I, why don't we just go with a planning board first who would like to be on it? I know that I would love to continue to be on this. But if someone else wants to jump in, please do so. Sally, your hand is up. Yicheng, is your hand up? Nope.
I, I, Cheryl?
No, I'm, I'm maxed out on capital committee, guys, sorry.
So I think at this moment it's Sally and I from planning.
And I'm very gratified, Dab, and everyone, because I have been worried about our town trees for far longer than I have been a planning board member. than I have been a planning board member. And I totally understand the intersection of the planning board's work and the health of our town tree canopy. So I'm happy to do this work with you.
Excellent. And then I turn it over to Zeke.
Conservation Commission members, is anyone that would like to step forward to be on this commission?
Well, I mean, certainly, I'd like to maintain the momentum that I've built up as the separate so far.
Excellent. Thank you, David. I appreciate all of your efforts and bandwidth. We have Kerry Layton, Anne Store, and Steve Cohen on board as well. Would any of you also like to be on this board? Or is everyone else too busy?
I think this year, Zeke, I'm probably too busy. We don't have Reid here. So that's too bad, right? Reid Q is not here.
Well, you know, these aren't permanent. You know, we can, well, if he's adamant and wants to arm wrestle me over, and I'm sure I'm I'm willing to let him.
Well, this is the perfect opportunity to assign some a task to someone who is not here.
That is often done.
That's how I ended up on the capital committee, remember?
I do vividly.
But you are thrilled to be on there, Cheryl. I can tell.
It's exciting and new.
Okie dokie. Well, I think that we we have the beginnings of the the Urban Forestry Tree Committee Subcommittee, whatever it's called. And then I think that we are, we do have a meeting with the Concom again in a few weeks. Am I correct on that, Brian? In which we will discuss more about the other parts.
Uh, yes, I believe so.
And I think that's where we will get into more in depth, I think, in looking at how the Concom, what its responsibilities are for certain projects, the timing in terms of bringing projects before which committee, and how we can make sure that we have full communications so that we get the best results for both planning and Concom for projects. So I really look forward to that.
All right, last thing then about this here, I guess, at least on our side, is that the we the Sustainability Director has been named. It is a Winchester resident named Ken Pruitt. He'll be starting October 12th. He will be part of this if he can, this subcommittee. So I will handle the scheduling of 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 those meetings moving forward. I'll talk to Zeke or sorry, David. And about that. So I'll I'll handle the scheduling of these of these meetings. And I think, Zeke, you were about to say something.
No, I think this is a great first step, guys, and thank you for all of your time. We also have our meeting that's people are about 10 other people are waiting at my other computer to get off and join so that we don't delay their evenings as well. So unless there's anything else, thank you for this, and we'll get going on the subcommittee.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Okay, so are the next thing on the planning board's agenda is we are going to be reviewing a ZB A proposal that's going, a petition that's going in front of the zoning board of appeals. And for those who do not know, the planning board provides advisory recommendations to the zoning board on special permits and site plan review. We are not the determined, we're not the special permit granting authority, but we, along with many other committees and boards in town government, do provide our expertise and opinion. And so if there are members of the public who want to comment on this, well, your most effective means of commenting is actually to comment at the ZB A hearings as we are not holding a public hearing this evening. So Brian, if you would like to lead us off on ZB A petition number three nine four nine.
Sure, this is nine Chardon Road. The petitioner is seeking a site plan review. Because the house with this new addition will be greater than 5,000 square feet. It's located in the RDB, which means it requires 10,000 square feet, and it has 17,282. The house is built in the year 2000. At the time of the memo, the Historical Commission and DRC had not met. But since the time of this memo, they have, the Historical Commission found no adverse impact on historic resource. The Design Review Committee voted in favor with several conditions related to trees and the saving of those trees, but nothing about the house. The proposal entails a two story addition to the rear of the house with some landscaping, new hardscape. It's closest to 25 Ridgefield Road, where there is a tree buffer between these houses. And I believe this is what the DRC was talking about. So based on the size, the location, the fact this is at the end of a cul-de-sac and the scale of the houses in the vicinity, I did not see the proposal to negatively affect the immediate neighbors or the neighborhood in general, and recommended favorable action with regards to this petition. Back to you, DAB.
Okay, is there, I'll just, if there are any comments from board members? My screen is rather small this evening, so you may just need to speak up.
Oh, I guess the the just to understand what the the scope of our consideration is, is they are asking for site plan review because it triggered that action in consideration of the enlarging of the house above a certain threshold. So our our the scope or the limit of our concerns is the criteria in nine five one that have to do with site plan review. Is that right? Or actually, it's nine five seven. The criteria are in nine five seven. And I just wanted to clarify that that's that's the focus of our conversation, correct?
Yes, it is.
Good, thank you.
Brian, you wouldn't happen to have nine five seven handy? Would you just remind?
Yeah, I can bring it up in just a second.
Yeah. So while Brian is bringing that up, are there any comments on particulars of the site? Yiching, please.
I looked through the plans and looked at the proposal and just felt like it was a appropriate addition within, you know, the zoning criteria. And it is on top of a lawn, so it's existing space that has been open. I suppose if they did do some work on it, there could be some trees falling for that work. But where the building is now, it seems, it seems like an ideal place to do so. With real, you know, in scale and sort of appropriate in design, it's it's in the back site and it's just one can't really see it from the street. So I I feel like just a straw poll would be really nice if we could just, you know, see what everybody's feeling. But my, my, you know, feeling is that it's completely fine.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. Why don't we have, I think if if someone wants to make a motion, we don't actually need a straw vote. Someone wants to make a motion, we get a second, we can proceed.
Cheryl, can I can I hear your thoughts about this? I'm just really curious.
I'm trying to, I I'm not sure that I really understand, or I understand what Brian has said, that it's the only thing really holding it back is the the 5,000 square feet. Can you, how far over 5,000 is it? Do you, I don't see that necessarily.
The owners or architect might be able to know that off the top of their head who are, I believe, are here. I do not have that information. Am I ready? Through through the chair.
Yes, do we have, do we, which do we have a representative from the petitioners here? So there I see a Joseph San Patella.
Eric is here.
Eric is here. So why don't we, whoever is, who is Eric?
Eric, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, but I saw you wave your hand.
Okay, well, one of one of you.
Eric, you're muted, so you know, too.
Yeah, so whoever wants to speak for the party, please unmute themselves. Joseph San Patella, your hand is up. Do you wish to speak? If you do, you need to unmute yourself.
Hi, Eric is going to speak for us. He's very familiar with what we're planning to do and why.
Okay, so Eric Gerda, I hope I pronounced your last name right. If you could unmute yourself.
Thank you for the button. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, go right ahead.
Here.
Okay, great, great. All right. So you asked about the square footage? So the existing square footage is 2,200 four forty seven square feet of the existing. And then we're proposing 1,068 square footage on the first floor. And then the existing second floor is 2,650. And then we're adding an additional 510 square feet on the second floor. So.
So you're adding a total of 1,578 square feet.
That's right.
To.
So.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Based on the, based on the the outlets in the basement of the new addition, does that put you in a position to have to count that level, that room below grade or partially below grade as part of the square footage of the house?
Because more than 50% is buried, Al doesn't like to count that. He says I don't have to count that if more than 50% is.
That is true. Yep, that's that's correct.
That would be a cellar rather than a basement, I believe.
Right. So what is the total square? What is the total square footage above grade?
So we have two, I added up here, 2,650 plus five ten plus twenty two, four seven, plus 10,068. So we got 3,316, but they add, they make us add the garage. So so it's 867 square feet. So.
Okay, so you're approximately at seventy three hundred some square feet total.
Right, that's right.
And you started at 4897, according to my calculations.
That's right, right.
So you're pretty much at the max when you got started.
Okay.
But my impressions, DAB, may I share?
Sure.
Were that this seems like what Yiching said was, I agree with it. It seems like as sensitive a location on this site to make a fairly substantial addition to the house. And given its secluded nature, am I right that the house backs up to the town forest?
Yes.
So it the chances of it having an impact on a neighboring structure are little to none. And going to Brian's list of the the criteria that new construction must and must not do, I don't see anything in here that this addition would do. And so from my point of view, I'm inclined to be in favor of them moving forward.
Okay, so is, do we have a motion?
Yiching?
I make a motion that we we recommend favorable action for nine Chardon Street. What other things do we need to add to that?
I believe that's all we need to add. I did, I do realize that I did forget to ask the Assistant Town Engineer if he had any comments on this, since I apologize.
Thank you, DAB. I was one, I was worried you guys would forget about me.
Never, late, but never.
So this project has a net increase of about 980 square feet of impervious surface. The Appicin proposes to install two infiltration chambers to mitigate or infiltrate the runoff. So conceptually, I think they're on the right track. There's some minor technical issue, you know, questions that came up. Nothing that would, you know, prevent their project from moving forward. However, the the largest issue, which is more of a technical matter, is that the way that they calculated their the amount of runoff from their site was not, they were not using storms that the town Winchester would consider design storms. So they would ultimately need to rerun their models. But that that shouldn't adversely impact their approach to the project.
Okay, excellent. And I I am assuming those those comments you'll be passing on to the ZB A.
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
So on on the question of conditions, I'm I'm curious, Brian, if you could clarify the Design Review Committee's conditions that had to do with trees. I I didn't have a chance to see in the drawing if there are existing trees on the site of the the new construction.
Sally, can we hold off one second, if only because procedurally, we do need to move forward with Yiching's motion, and I apologize for breaking procedure.
Okay.
But we do have a motion to approve or to recommend favorable action. And is there a second for that motion?
I second.
Okay, and now technically, we can discuss that motion. And if you want to discuss the conditions Brian mentioned from the DRC.
So are you guys looking at this now, protect trees and vegetation?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so these were the two. So it was basically protect if you can. And if you can't, you have to replace equivalents somewhere. You know, somewhere on the site. So it seems.
Okay.
So the only amendment to the motion would be that we would agree with the DRC's recommendations for tree protection and tree replacement.
Okay.
You you can, you can make that motion to amend Yiching's.
Yeah, so do you want to make that motion to amend?
I do. I would like to amend Yiching's motion to include a condition from the planning board that is in concurrence with the Design Review Committee's conditions to protect trees and to replant a equivalent.
Okay, is there a second for that amended motion, that motion to amend?
A second, huh?
Okay, so now we need to vote on the motion to amend. All in favor, why don't we start with Cheryl Wolf?
Aye.
Yiching Scott?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Dejarius Aye, the motion to amend succeeds. Now we move to the main motion, which is to recommend favorable action on petition, whatever the heck petition is, petition three nine four nine. And roll call vote again. Cheryl Wolf?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Yiching Scott?
Aye.
Dejarius Aye, four zero. And that's it, four zero. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the petitioner is coming for the board and giving us their expertise. Thank you, Brian Manter from Engineering, for reminding us not to forget you. And we are going to move on then to our next agenda item, which is are we on schedule?
Yeah, we're just about five minutes off from the Rangeley Park Heritage District Commission appointments. Unfortunately, neither, so there were two, two people that were up for reappointment. And unfortunately, neither of them were able to come this meeting or next meeting. So we just decided to put them on now. And they're, they want to both re-up Christine Schmidt and Colleen McInnes. So unfortunately, we cannot interview them again. But they're, they both, there was in your packet, they showed their sincere desire to to continue on doing the work.
So the background of this is that the town meeting has authorized the creation of I'm going to get the words wrong, so let me get it right. Heritage District? Did I get that right?
Correct, heritage.
Right. And there are a number of committees which appoint members to those commissions, those district commissions. And the planning board is one of them. And so we have two meeting members, or two members presenting who would wish to be re-upped. So we can simply move that we accept the I'm trying to get my window up so I can read their names. I apologize. So we accept Colleen McInnes and Christine Schmidt to reappoint them to. to, uh, reappoint them to the Rangel District Heritage Commission. Uh, Yiching?
Um, can you give us a background about who they are and what they're representing and what their skill sets are? It says that, um, we appoint four, and then three should be residents and one should be, have some sort of historical permission.
Right.
So what, what, what are these people representing?
Sure, so Christine Schmidt, uh, is a resident. Um, she's been the chair since the beginning, so she's been, uh, the chair of this committee since twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Of the Heritage District.
Of this Heritage District Commission, um, very dedicated. And then Colleen McInnes is, uh, a, a registered architect, um, doesn't do too much work in Winchester, but, um, is an architect, so she's the one with the, um, with the skill set, um, that we need, so.
She's the one that doesn't live on Rangel or in that neighborhood.
Correct, she is not a resident, she is the, the Winchester resident, uh, she, you know, she's outside of the neighborhood who has the skill set that's needed for the job.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, um.
I have, I have no other questions, um, is a mo- if Cheryl does, and then I ask, is a motion in order?
A motion is definitely in order.
I would move that the planning board reappoint, if I'm not mistaken, Christine Schmidt and Colleen McInnes to be the planning board appointees to the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission. Um, and I think that it's for the terms specified. Because I don't know the terms.
Yes, I don't know the terms either.
Let's see, you know, it said the right, Colleen acquired in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, so that would be, uh, twenty twenty-four.
In twenty twenty-one, okay. They're three-year terms, is that what they are?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so to, to, three-year terms, starting now.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Yiching seconds, roll call vote please, uh, Cheryl Wolf?
Aye.
Yiching Scott?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Dejarius Aye, four zero. Congratulations to, um, Colleen and Christine. Okay, uh, let's move back to our agenda, we are flying through it. So Jesse and Kurt, uh, it is very unusual that we keep to our agendas, so don't get too excited. Uh, so let's see, uh, the next on our agenda, yes.
Sorry, Dea, but I just want like two, two quick points, um, one, um, Brian Mantor, I don't, I, I don't know if, um, if we need engineering for the rest of the, our agenda items. So I don't, I'm unsure if we wanted to release Brian, uh, for the evening.
Oh.
Um, and then, uh, the other is that although Kurt cannot vote yet, which he could, hopefully he can, might be able to get sworn in bef- certainly will, it certainly will be sworn in before, uh, the next meeting, but maybe by the end of this week or next, next week, but certainly by the, the, the next meeting. Um, is that he can still discuss, so although he can't vote when we go around, uh, here moving forward, he should be recognized as a discussion, uh, to add, it may, Kurt, you might not have anything, because whatever, but, um, I think the point is that, he should not be counted as a vote, the most we can have is four votes tonight for anything, however, should be part of the discussion.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, so Brian, uh, if you wish to enjoy the remaining of your evening, not the Brian on top of the screen, the Brian on the bottom of the screen. Thank you very much for joining us, and, uh, we'll see you again.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome, guys. I think I'll stay on board with the Converse Place discussion, um, because I think that'll fall under engineering eventually, so. Want to just listen to that one, but thank you.
Uh, the Converse Place discussion is actually next meeting.
It, yes, it is not on, it is not on tonight.
Oh, okay.
I did, I did think that, I, I thought I heard that we were gonna talk to Concom about Converse Place today. Was that, was that part of the agenda?
That was the original agenda, and then that part of the agenda got erased, and we, we just talked about the tree bylaw, and then we're gonna talk about, uh, Converse Place at a later date.
With, in, in the public meeting, or, uh, with, with them?
Um.
Directly?
It, so it will be, um, it, it will be, they will, they may have an opinion during the he- hearing, just like any border committee that could respond, you know, as a, as a public, uh, portion, um, they, they, they might respond, so that's when we, that's when we'll see them, you know, under the, under that public hearing, um.
Um, follow-up question to Yiching's, um, if I, as a planning board member, have a question about some conservation commission, we're, you know, a th- a covered issue or, or topic related to ten Converse, can I just reach out to one of the other two representatives and on this new working group and say I have a question about this? Is that?
No, I would not, I think any questions that you would have related to Conservation Commission, you would reach out to the Conservation Agent, Elaine Vreeland. She is always, that, instead, the e- the easiest answer is always staff, because you don't have to question yourself in terms of anything, you can open meeting, open, open meeting later, anything is.
Okay, good.
Question, so if you have a question about how Conservation Commission would, uh, look at a certain project, anything like that.
Define or whatever.
Eve Vreeland at Winchester, Eve Vreeland at Winchester.us is where you want to go.
Yes, I will, I will follow up with Elaine, thank you.
Yeah, the, the only thing that we, first of all, the, the new tree by, the new tree subcommittee will only be concerned with the tree bylaw, nothing else, so any commi- any questions about any other projects.
Oh, that's right, you're exactly right, I misspoke. Thank you, Dea.
Sure.
So I will ask my ten Converse Place question to Elaine.
Yep.
Thank you.
And so Brian, I guess, uh, Brian Mantor, I guess you'll be sitting on Zoom for two weeks if you wanna, if you want to continue until ten Converse shows up. So, uh, what's before us tonight is, so the right, the right lock. Now WL is Waterfield Lot Task Force, is, uh, for background, is a a working group set up by the select board to advise them on priorities for an upcoming renegotiation of the Civico Land Disposition Agreement, um, which was approved by town meeting, but was then, uh, reek, there was a referendum, and the majority voted to, I guess, um, overturn that approval. So the Waterfield Lot Task Force was given the charge of ranking six priorities, and Brian, if you could bring those six priorities up. So they, they have a very narrow brief, um, and the question before our board is does this board want to make a public comment about these priorities? Um, at the very least, does this board want to simply rank the priorities as we see fit? Do we want to say more? The, um, the important constraint is that, uh, all such opinions are due in, by the sixteenth, which is in two days. So there is a limit to what we can accomplish, we can only accomplish what we can in the next forty-five minutes. So, um, why don't we start the discussion as to does this committee want to make a public statement to the task force? And why don't we, if you have an opinion, why don't we do round robin here and give one minute description of your position on that? So who would like to start? Sally?
I would start by saying I am in favor of the planning board making a statement, um, as a board, um, on our position with regards to the ordering of these priorities, um, in terms of, of ranking them for their importance in renegotiating the land disposition agreement terms.
Okay. Um, let's move on, uh, I'll just go in order in my screen here. Kurt, do you have a, do you have an opinion one way or the other on this?
Um, I don't think I do, yet, I'm, like I said, I'm still sort of processing, um, exactly what our role on the planning board is, and I get this has actually been helpful to hear everyone talk and, and throw out different things, it's, I'm starting to understand a little bit more like what our role is in these various processes, so I, I think, no, I think I would defer to, um, the other planning board members.
Okay, cool. Um, Yiching?
Um, I thought that, from the last meeting, was it just yesterday or two days ago, um, with the task force? It, it felt like it was maybe effective that some of the other boards had something to say, um, in those, in that situation. I wonder how different it would be this time than, than the last time when we, when we, um, sent out this statement, but, um, I would be, I would be in favor of perhaps having a board, um, note.
Okay, excellent, um, Cheryl?
Yeah, I would be in favor of a of a memo, I guess, from my work.
Okay, and I agree with everyone, so, uh, looks like we're gonna do something. So the next question is, uh, what are we going to do? The simplest thing we could do is simply to rank these priorities. Um, the next thing would be to rank priorities and actually provide some context for why we are ranking them, and, uh, not just the relative priorities, but the absolute priorities, so for instance, if, what's something we rank number six, if we really don't care about it, we could say we don't even have to put it on our list of things to rank, because it's totally not important to us, so, um, shall we begin with simply trying to rank the priorities and then come up with some words around that?
So c- can, can, um, so this list of the six elements of, of the agreement, um, were created by, um, the select board and others who were involved in the original request for proposal, right? Um, and, and I think that it's a combination of that and the fact that these were the six points that that the portion of our community that chose to, um, precipitate a vote to overturn a vote of town meeting, these are the things that they are concerned about, so, um, in, in ranking them, this would be our perspective on, well, if push comes to shove, this has to be preserved and, and this one could be modified, you know, it's that kind of a thing, right? In negotiating strategy methods, right?
Right, and i- in terms of who drew up this list, um, I don't know, um, the details as to for instance, certainly the length of the ground lease was not a, not a big thing in the RFP.
Right.
There is a combination, but, um, the origin of this list, I think, is, 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 um, is, is clouded as to, I don't know how it came up with it, but, um, certainly, yeah, we would say, for instance, that, um, if we were to say number five was our most important, then this would be when the select board goes into negotiations, they would be able to say, if, you know, the planning board agreed with many of the other boards, that you know, the majority of town committees thought that, for instance, affordable housing mix was the most important thing, so, yeah.
Right, right.
We don't know how the select board will take these suggestions or recommendations and work through them to arrive at their negotiation position. So I think we can't second guess what they're going to do, um, I think we just have to put forward our strongest case.
Brian has his hand up.
Brian, please go ahead.
So I think there's some clear things here that the planning board can make comments on, whether or not it makes sense to weight them in terms of priority, I don't know, but there's clear things, and, and I can, I can, I can help get some of those things out. The, the length of the ground lease isn't really a planning exercise that, um, in general. Um, but maybe, but maybe everything else is, may, there might be comments on revenue, who knows, but I think the ones that are really clear are one, two, and five, meaning that there's a clear voice from the planning board that would probably, like, in terms of why everyone wants to say something, it's probably things related to the affordable housing and market rate mix, the design of the project, and the parking impacts. So I would imagine that it makes sense to spend the rest of the time focusing on those three, because those, those are, those are things that are, that are related to this board.
I agree, that's well said.
Very sound advice, um. Everyone seems to be nodding at you, Brian, so.
Okay, so starting with number five here, the mix, the mix of affordable and market rate housing units. Um, the one thing I'm gonna note from, and you don't, you don't have this, and everyone should be reading this, this is a, a this is the memo from Lynn Sweet that was just shared with, this is gonna go up on the website, um, all of this information will be up on the website soon, I can't tell you exactly when. But this memo from Lynn Sweet, who's the financial analyst, who's been, um, looking at this, uh, project, she has almost thirty years of experience working with all different types of municipalities and affordable housing, uh, developers and other types of developers, that's why we hired her. Um, she has a huge breadth of knowledge about this, she's on, been both sides on the table for many years. She's very well respected in the commune, in, you know, the housing world in the Boston metro region. One thing related to the mix of the housing units, so this is one of her recommendations, you can see here in bold, is that there's a number of the eighty percent units, that I believe it's, there she's saying eight, and, um, now, this might not make sense, uh, but this is how the subsidies work, is that if we change eight units of those eighty percent units.
Can you just clarify that they're eighty percent AMI?
Correct, so eighty percent of AMI, of AMI is, um, a family of four that's, um, making about ninety, so, you know, forty-five, forty-five, yeah, Dea, yes?
Oh, define AMI, please.
So the area median income, so just for what that means, so a hundred percent of area median income is the exact average income, and what the area is, is actually from greater Boston, uh, which includes Quincy, all the way up to southern New Hampshire, so many people think that, well, the median income in Winchester is X, so it's eighty, you know, it's, you know, it, it, but it has nothing to do with the Winchester uh, average income, it's the entire area that is from Quincy to southern New Hampshire, that is the, that's what we use, it's called the Boston AMI.
And that's a number that comes from the Massachusetts Housing Department, right?
Right, the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you.
So what Lynn, what Lynn is saying here is that if we, um, there were, if, if we changed eight of the units that are at eighty percent of the area median income to sixty percent units, meanings you, uh, these are for lower income individuals. You actually get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in the upfront purchase price, because there's more subsidy at the state, at the state level, so this is a kind of a housing finance is, I, I, put it this way, I'm learning a lot throughout this process, I, this is, this is, obviously, you know, I'm not a housing expert, and this is complicated, not straightforward, housing finance, so, um, but this is obviously how it's done, meaning that, uh, people are not gonna do this, uh, out of, out of the goodness of their heart forever. The idea is that you have to make this not necessarily insanely profitable, but worth doing. Uh, so, so, so that's how this works, so the fact is that if we change eighty percent, so I would, I would say that that makes sense, that's something that we could, you could put in the memo to potentially rec- you know, um, uh, recommend changing uh, the eighty, eight of these units to sixty in order to get more of an upfront purchase price, um, that could go towards whatever, we could even put that two fifty towards another affordable housing development, who, who, who knows? The point is, is that it's two hundred and fifty more than that we're getting right now, so, Dea, back to you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say the flip side of that is we don't know how that will affect the long-term return on the property, so.
So that's a question.
That's a, so that's a question that Lynn is, 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 that's what came out of the meeting last night, is where is the over-under of that? So, 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 so that is being determined, there's going to be new numbers, so, so these numbers are not final, and that, that's part of it, it's more of like, it's more of what are some of the few things that we can talk about in a short timeframe before the sixteenth meeting? Uh, of, yeah, of what we can.
For instance, we could say, oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl, go ahead.
I, I just have a, another sort of Brian question, so, and it relates to what Dea said, so if um, if, if the developer is paying the town the two fifty K, right, for the purchase, but the developer then owns the property, so, Dea, your question about income, is that really?
They're not, this is a long-term lease.
Okay, that's where the word purchase is confusing to me, because in a lease, you, you make an upfront payment or something, but there's, where is the purchase?
So I.
Purchase is the right.
Yeah, I can, I can understand that, that, uh, Yeah, I can I can understand that that uh that does not make sense, but it's it's really more in um yeah, I guess it's not, it's not, it's not a purchase, this is this a- as of right now, it's a it's a long-term lease for ninety-nine years. But in terms of there's a there's a developer fee that they, uh you know, have to pay, but then there's also um uh it's um well it's not a purchase, but I don't I don't know what I couldn't.
It's in a civico proposal, the thing that made them distinguished above the other proposals was that they came up with an amount of money that they were going to give to the town in two chunks or in one chunk, and then which was a million dollars, and then the town was gonna give half of that money back to them um at a certain point. And so the the net of that was a half a million.
But that I believe comes back to the town again.
Say again, Dia?
I believe that that half million from the town eventually does come back to the town through this long payout over time.
So 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 it it is in so with regards to um the recommendation from Lynn Sweet, um and in terms of what we would say in our letter, the most we could say is that um we would be in favor of having um a limited number of more units designated for a lower pop a lower AMI population if X, and we would say what X is?
I think one, yeah, so so to to put some more meat on my concern, namely, as you change the designation of the units, um the the so the town is gonna get recurring revenues from the side via property taxes and through some percentage of essentially um net income over expenses, if I get that right. And so the, we're not gonna get an awful, we get ten percent of, let's call it their extra profit, which is a very small amount of money, it'll be incredibly tiny. So the change from an eighty percent AMI unit to a sixty percent AMI unit may change what the property taxes are. And so the only question I have is that if we get two hundred and fifty upfront over a ninety-nine-year lease, how much do we, what is, I mean, I don't know how you do that calculation, but it may decrease the property value. So over the long run, you get less money. So it's a, but then you factor in inflation and all this other stuff, so I don't know. So I would suggest that we put the condition that this provides a net increase in total revenue to the town, which kind of hedges our bets.
Or this note to the task force, it seems like we're getting into the weeds too much, I mean.
That's what I'm worried about too, Eching.
Yeah, I I think this, because this this seems like to be an out-of-the-box thinking about how to get more money for the town. And that's sort of not within our expertise, maybe Kurt has more expertise on that, but it's it seems like if we are gonna write a letter before in in two days and deliver it to the town manager like this, this is not what we're.
Right, I think you're right, Eching, and also because so much of this is dependent upon so many other variables. Um I think, Brian, you were on the right track when you said that of the six, there's the three that are um well within the purview of a planning board to be concerned about and to prioritize. So the parking was one, the affordable housing mix was one, and what was the third one?
The third was the design, and so so really, yeah, so so really, the the question, I guess, for this first one is that it's regardless of the revenue then, although, meaning although although that that obviously, you know, helps you make a decision or or not, but 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 it's still information. The idea is that is the mix of affordable units, uh and we can go over the current mix, that is the proposal, uh uh or if we wanna keep, uh because there were actually a number of eighty percent AMI units, like I said, that that they could actually make more money, quote, by by giving more sixty percent AMI units. So is that something that we, you know, that's one of the levers that the select board is going to be going to renegotiate with? So do we wanna talk about the mix?
Can I ask another question, Brian? So um if if we enter into um an agreement um to 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 have this ninety-nine-year lease, and they're getting this funding through having affordable housing, are they required for the length of the lease, the ninety-nine years, to provide affordable housing?
Correct.
Okay.
Brian, is that is that true? Is it gonna be, because usually the land use restriction agreements tied with long-term housing tax credit deals are like thirty years. Um Massachusetts is more restrictive than other states, but I know it does vary from state to state. I don't know that they're usually in perpetuity or if they're not, like, run with the ground lease concurrently.
Yeah, I found out today that like the um that the Mandarin Hotel building downtown has affordable units in it, and they run about six million dollars apiece.
So I I believe the RFP is in perpetuity, um but uh that would be the only point. And I mean, that's the whole point of the town owning and controlling the land, is that these are units that will forever be uh affordable. Or certainly for at least.
And if they're gonna lock in the sixty or eighty for ninety-nine years, or is it open to the Housing Partnership Board or the Housing Authority to reconsider that at a certain point, like thirty years or whatever, what Kurt said?
Uh well, I mean, it's possible programs can can change and and that type of thing, but the the idea is that it would be affordable.
I have to go, there's an alarm going off here, I'll be back.
The other thing is
Me mute?
The the other thing that I think is really important about this is the local preference condition. And the local preference condition was not actively promoted at the point of the RFP. It only came up to my awareness when they had the open house after the the re-vote was set and scheduled, and they had an open house to address all the concerns. I think local preference is really, really important. And I think they mentioned in the open house that it would be seventy percent of the open, no, excuse me, of the affordable units would be given to qualifying Winchester residents.
That's possible, that that is the that's the highest amount, and they did, they didn't see why that wouldn't be possible in this case, so that is correct.
So I would just say that that anything that they do with regards to mix, whether it's sixty or eighty or whatever, the seventy percent local preference, and that goes to residents and employees living at sixty or eighty-eight percent AMI, or even thirty for some. Um that that would be like, I think about the the sine qua non of things when you're prioritizing, like, I can do without this, but I don't wanna do without that, right? Um and for me, the seventy percent local preference is a huge benefit to the town. And and then the other one for me is the design. So that that's where I weigh in on the ranking.
Is is it within like the planning board's purview to take a position that we would favor just more affordable units? Like, does that like fall within like the scope of this board? And and I'm not saying like to mandate it, but if it were we were coming out with an opinion on something, is it fair to say we would favor any change to the proposal that results in more affordable units being created or more affordability?
So let me jump in really quickly, so definitely it is within our purview. There are actually interesting arguments to keep a mix of market-grade and non-market-grade apartments in the same complex in terms of providing, um I mean, the civico people did a much better job of explaining this than I will. But in terms of, um first of all, you're not ghettoizing it as just an affordable place, which is an issue. The other is that it allows um socialization and availability of opportunity, which you might not have otherwise. And so I have always traditionally thought that we should have as much affordable as possible. But I I think civico made a compelling argument that they they prefer in their affordable units to have a mix for those reasons, so.
Not 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 to be a cynic, but I mean, I think they also need the market range units to make the project economically viable, I suspect.
Right, and Kurt, I don't know if you know, but it um forty out of sixty units are affordable.
Forty out of sixty, thank you.
One of the highest numbers of any of the proposals.
Well, it was the very, I think it was the highest. And but isn't civico's organizational structure, their development team has an aspect to their whole pro forma that is in some way more characteristic of a nonprofit type of a proposal? Brian, can you help me with that?
Um I just, I I don't know, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, not be only because I'm, I don't think I'm qualified to, but I I um I mean, I think they they do a lot of different types of projects, they're in it for the long the long haul and 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 are are well-versed in the low-income housing tax credit world. I I mean, I, you know, these are, this is not the only thing they do, but it's one of the things they do, for sure.
Um so to get to keep us on task to sort of get this letter out, um what do you think should be in it? And I feel like our um statement from the last time before the the re-vote um is sort of the the gist, you know, the kind of big big bear picture, it aligns with the master plan, it aligns with the house housing, you know, plan, production plan. So those points are sort of the big picture things that I feel like this board is supposed to look at, like the sustainability component. But, you know, I don't, I don't know if you guys remember that that statement, but it it was long, and if we could, you know, maybe cater it to this task force committee and to speak to them.
Can you pull it up, Brian? Do you remember where you put it in your drive?
Sorry, what what?
The letter that that the planning board.
It was the one that went we we went out to town meeting prior to.
Uh yeah, I don't, I certainly don't have that handy.
Yeah, so I so I think that, so there are two things that I think we should. So we're writing this letter both to the task force in essence, also to the select board, who will be making the final decision. So I think that a a a general statement of the priorities or or the position of the planning board in terms of affordable housing and the master plan, I think, is appropriate. Uh but I but also, um so we could take that from that previous letter. Um but then also stating, I think, in in pretty forcefully that we do have priority, that that we do see rankings of of these three things that Brian mentioned to us, that we do place, I would assume, we place the affordable housing mix at the top of our list, that this is this is the reason why this development is going on this lot is because it's the town's ability, uh you know, it's our ability to put affordable housing in the right place. And the next would be, I mean, the design, and in my personal view, I think parking is 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 not a really important position for this board to take, but that's my personal view.
Well, parking is important to the extent that it within the realm of the planning board's portfolio is economic development, and that it is the concern of many members of our downtown community that economic development will be made or broken based on availability of public parking. And so that's why there's a meeting on the twenty-first to kick off talking about public parking. I don't think it's right for us to diminish it or say it's outside of our purview to be concerned about it. Um but I do, I I I still go back to that sort of without which nothing test. Um and if I had to choose one and throw all of these away, which one would I choose first? And then you do the next one and the next one. And I would definitely say that affordable housing is at the top of the list, and I would definitely say that the design of the project as it's proposed is really good, and any further refinements that they do should just make it better. Um and um that the public parking um should be worked out. It's not that it's not important, but it it shouldn't be the thing that scraps the whole idea.
You you could just point out that it uh, you know, it had the largest amount of public parking out of the all the five. I mean, it could be the comment could be that simple, is that semico civico provided the most amount of public parking out of all the responses.
Right, and.
I think that's a really good point, Brian, and based on its location, Sally, I think I think it's it's critical that the parking associated with the not only with the development, but with that lot in town with the train and commuters. I I it just seems like it's it's kind of a natural fit that the town would think of that site as some a location for a for, you know, really stacking parking.
Right, and and I definitely want this 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 um task force and the select board to keep parking high on the list. Um and there's a lot of different ways to um deal with the parking problem in Winchester, and people have been trying to deal with it for a long time. And I do think that some of those rejected options can be reconsidered um in the context of public-private investment. And so knowing that those possible avenues have not yet been explored, I wouldn't put parking as more important than the mix of affordable and market rate, and not more important than the design of the building itself. So I would put it in third place as a really important issue to be addressed and to credit civico for recommending or proposing the highest number. Um because that's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, my I my concern is that so much that that we're we're gonna try to solve the problem of public parking in downtown area based solely on this project. I think that there's an awful lot of there's civico isn't really creating the problem.
No, that's right.
Exaggerating it a bit, but focusing on the public parking aspect of this seems to me is that it's 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 putting too much weight or responsibility on civico to solve a problem, which um has plainly been avoided or not dealt with seriously for the last twenty years. So I, my concern is that so there will be a loss of public parking, on the other hand, we are creating sixty units with possibly, you know, so we're looking at maybe a hundred twenty to a hundred eighty people who will now be living in downtown and will be consumers, and so they're gonna make up for some of that loss of parking by their very presence.
That's right, and.
So so I I I
Do you think we should not even address the issue of parking and just say the things that we really care about are numbers two and five, and these are the reasons why?
Did we lose Eching?
Cheryl, you so look like you have.
So, all right, sorry, very quickly, Eching did text me, she's been having some computer issues, may have to phone in, but yeah, so she's she did text me, and now she looks like she's about to come back in, um we'll see if that works, but yeah, just got that. Anyway, sorry to interrupt.
No, so can I just ask, it's so, because I I didn't attend um this task force meeting, can you just give a a quick little I guess what I'm trying to understand is the task force is trying to do research for the select board so that they can go in and negotiate with civico, is what I'm seeing, or what I've read. But
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Brian.
Sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I think the from from what I can tell from the select board is um is that the the task force is essentially another body, just like any other public body, that is um advising the select board on how to negotiate. But um it doesn't, it the the task force, yeah, is just another public body, but the task force is not the ones negotiating. Um it's basically, it's it's going, you know, the idea is being able to talk about these six things and what things can be moved that that will allow this to move through town meeting. Um or or really, that will not, that that will that would prevent a referendum vote, I guess, is really, because it seems like just getting through town meetings not enough, um it it wasn't.
Apparently, that's right.
Um so, yeah, in the in the in, um does that answer your question, Cheryl?
Yeah, I just, uh I guess I'm kind of starting to um rethink how how we actually help um in this, other than to say, you know, um you know, we, whatever you guys need, we're, you know, we are behind this. We I I think everybody on the board wanted this to go through, um was happy that it passed town meeting and then shocked that it had a referendum, so I don't.
And 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 the reason for that referendum is this is this list that was come up by the referendum group. And, 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 and the reason for that referendum is this, is this list that was come up by the referendum group.
Right, Cheryl?
So, so, no, no, the, 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 um, the refer, so the, this, I, again, it was clouded who came up with this, but the select board voted these six things to be talked, like, they, they voted in this charge. So that, that's what you should remember here, the select board voted in this charge.
Okay, that's helpful.
Um, so these are the things that the task force has been charged to deal with. We can basically, like Cheryl said, we can, you know, did we, you know, we, we, I shouldn't say we. The planning board voted to move forward with the, with the RF, you know, and with the LDA as is uh, under the, under that current scheme. Um, if the question, you know, there's really a couple of things here that, that can be moved because, because, and there are, like I said, there are ramifications. One is, do you, do we want to talk about potentially having, not necessarily more affordable, but maybe a different mix of DB affordable? And for that, maybe the answer is just to, to, for them to, you know, study that and, and come back. Because if their answer's not there, the answer's not there, which it isn't. When it comes to the design of the project, what we're really talking about, not really is, um, in my mind, how it looks. I think everyone from every board really, really liked Civico and Penrose and they both would be, people would be happy kind of with either, but, but Civico clearly rose to the top. Really, the question is here, uh, we've been asking for a lot of commercial space. Do we want more units? Maybe, maybe a few more market rate or other types of units would be better than commercial here. I, I don't know what, you know, that, that might be a question for the board, um, to talk about that. Um, but, you know, this is the time.
They, they get Civico to come back on board, right? And to do a redesign essentially in order to bring the town back into the fold to do this project. That's the idea, right? So then it's really just whether or not there's gonna be another, something that comes in front of us again that designs the project differently in order for them to get it through the town.
Yeah, this, this is all, this is correct. This is all about what do we need, what do, what do you, the, what is the planning board think it needs to do in order to get this over, not just the town meeting goal line, but basically buy in from the town that this is quote, a good deal for town.
So, so maybe we can start moving a little bit towards, um, some language so that I don't, I forget when we're supposed to stop talking about this.
We're supposed to stop talking about this at nine, ten, which is in six minutes. And I don't know that we could craft language, but we could craft bullet points that the letter must contain.
Yeah, so I, I really want to get it. So I think that what we're saying is that the affordable housing is the, the main component. And so the question is, where is the flexibility that we could possibly give? And so one of the comments was made to that, um, we're, that we would like the level, the number of affordable units to not go, excuse me, my earphones keep falling out. Um, that we would like to, to not lose any affordable units and that we are perhaps willing to give up the commercial space if that made the, um, project more viable.
I wouldn't agree with it, though.
Okay, so.
So I, I, I'm all about the affordable units and I was just looking up because I don't know Civico very well, but, you know, it's, um, you know, the son of consigly, the contractor, right? So this is all, this is all, you know, one big happy family of people who are gonna get something built. Um, and I just think that, um, if the town voted against this in the referendum because it was affordable units, then I think we just, um, if Civico can come back in and afford to build this with a different configuration of affordable units or not, is that possible for, for the site?
Cheryl, I understood that the, 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 that the big issue was not that there were affordable issue, uh, units, but that the revenue to the town was deemed to be, um, too low.
Okay, my mistake then.
No, 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 it's maybe it's multiple camps.
I think you can't make a distinction between there because that's not what the referendum was about. The referendum was on its face simply about whether or not the LDA, which was agreed to by the town should, was, was acceptable. So I think we can read into why that was not, why, why it voted one way or the other. But I don't think we can form our opinion based on what that, how we think, why we think people voted that way.
Yes, speculating, right, okay, go ahead.
The, 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 the one thing I was gonna add to that, though, is like, as a resident, you know, who wasn't part of the planning board certainly at the time and was just sort of trying to figure out and understand the issue. It, it seemed like the, the opposition was really pushing the economics, at least in their message. Now, whether like behind the scenes, it was really the affordable housing, the nimbyism, I don't know. But I, I know all of my peers who I talked to said, yeah, everything I'm hearing is, it's just not a good deal for the town. We're not getting paid enough for the lot, like, these guys are getting a lot practically for nothing and it's a ninety-nine year ground lease. And so the, mostly opposition I heard was like, we keep having these tax overrides and putting all this money and now we're giving away this lot. So I mean, I think at least the anecdotal comments I heard from people were about the economics and not the affordable housing.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then from your perspective, Kurt, I'd be interested in hearing from you than what, what you thought, you know, the moves could be.
It, it was interesting, so one question, Brian, and we're talking yesterday a little bit about this, that I, I feel like was sort of a little bit absent from the whole conversation. Maybe because it wasn't a compelling, um, reason for the project was just the fact that like, getting us more affordable units gets us closer to the ten percent threshold for forty B, which is like, should be important for everyone in the town because it allows us to control our own destiny a little bit more. Um, and so that, I, I feel like that statistic wasn't really, it wasn't mentioned, like, how much closer it gets us. Maybe because it actually doesn't get us that much closer, like, we're still a huge, huge way away from ten percent.
It gets us closer to halfway there.
Yeah, with, I mean, I, I'm in favor of that. So I mean, like, I, I would love to see more affordable units and love to see us get to that ten percent place just personally. But, um, I, I think that I didn't, I didn't have, I, I didn't study like the economic proposal well enough to know exactly what can happen. I just know from, I mean, having my company, we have an ownership position and affordable housing developer that is, you know, absolutely a peer, if not, you know, bigger than Civico. You know, so I know how these developments are financed and that they're gonna make a lot of money on this development. So I mean, yeah, if we really wanted to push, I guarantee they could, I mean, one lever is like development fee. As developers of affordable housing, they can bake into these budgets and they often do. And this is how they, these companies make their money and there's nothing wrong with that. But I mean, millions and millions and millions of dollars of development fees and that's how they fuel their companies. Um, and there's ways to, you know, if you need to pay more for the land, you can defer that development fee. And instead of getting it paid at the day you close on the project, you get it paid over the life of the project. You get like little payments every year from the income of the project. So there are ways to solve for the sources and uses if you need to come up with a bigger upfront payment. So I mean, my sense is that there are ways, if we wanted to push just on that, to solve for that. Um, but, but again, I, I would probably want to spend a little more time with the actual, like, you know, the budget, the sources and uses and the actual like forecast over the, you know, the, the timeline that Civico provided, to really think through it a little bit more. But, um, yeah, so that, that's my quick takeaway.
So that's really helpful, Kurt. Um, it, it makes me think that it almost, if, if, if the, if, if this is, if this letter that we've agreed is appropriate to send is simply to reaffirm those aspects of the project that we care deeply about and to state that we do not wish these to be compromised as the other areas of concern are addressed, then that's the most that we can say, because I, I mean, of course I want more revenue for the town if we can do it, but not at the expense of affordable housing and not at the expense of the design of the project. And so I don't know what else we could say about that, because.
I, I, that, that definitely resonates with me, because I, my understanding is that, that's like getting to the heart of what I understood the issue to be on the opposition side, other than perhaps some deep seated folks who really just are anti affordable housing. It was really the people who were just kind of reading the propaganda that was floating around on social media and whatnot. It would seem to be largely focused on the economics and people just saying, I feel like we're not getting a good deal. People are telling.
That's what I thought too, yeah. So, yeah, it's a short letter because it says, it says, we still stand by what we said to you last time when we wrote. Um, but given the new circumstances, um, and given the, the push-pull nature of these six items, you know, because you know what I mean by push-pull, you push one, the other one falls, whatever, or moves. Um, that these are the things that are the most important to us and please don't compromise those as you address the others.
So I, I, that is a statement. I, I, I don't, and, and I, I want to remind the board that we do have another conversation about asking for federal money for affordable housing coming up next.
Right, we do.
Um, but when we say we're not gonna compromise on number five, or we wish the town wouldn't, what do we mean by that?
So I don't mean so much compromise, compromise is the wrong word, thank you for calling that out. I, I think that what I mean is, um, just to still butcher them, I mean.
But, but I, what, what do we, I mean, saying, Yicheng, you, you.
Yeah, I, I do, yeah, but I think that, you know, I, a lot of us agree that, um, number five, the affordable units are important. But, um, to Kurt's point too, I think that there needs to be some public education about the hostile forty Bs and what this does for the town. Um, so I think, I feel like that was a little bit lost, um, and we didn't, we didn't emphasize that particular in our last statement. Uh, the, the emphasis of that, you know, the push and pull, like what Maureen was saying in yesterday's meeting too. Like, these are the numbers that would help us to get safe harbor or, you know, that affordable, that rental units actually count the entire sixty units rather than just forty. Um, those sorts of things, I think, um, people don't know. And I don't know if it's our job in this statement to, um, talk about that as one of the reasons why we think this is important as a planning exercise of, of trying to make it so that we can grow towards that housing production plan, you know, sustainably. Um, that this is a big part of it. So, so for the housing, it's not just that we, we care about affordable units, but it aligns with master plan, it aligns with housing production and aligns with, you know, trying to stay clear of hostile forty Bs.
Right, I mean, the, the, the effect on forty Bs is, is a little delayed in part because, um, we're gonna fall out of safe harbor next spring regardless of what happens. This project will not get permitted for another couple of years, so we won't be in safe harbor for a couple of years. So there is no immediate benefit. I mean, if we do go ahead with the LDA and everything moves forward, we're still not gonna see a benefit from this project until at least twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty, twenty, yeah, probably twenty, twenty-four would be, I mean, it's, it has to get through permitting. It could be appealed, but it had, just has to get through permitting, so.
So, yeah, so if this gets further delayed, we will fall further back, right?
Yeah, that's the way to.
Contributes to the harm.
So I, I think that if we're gonna hang our hat on it, and I think it's an important thing, we, we, we can't put too much, it can't be our sole support. And I wanna, I, I'm still a little concerned is that if we, we're gonna prioritize these things and we're gonna say, you know, the mix of affordable market rate housing is a very important thing. We want you to, whatever you do, don't change that mix. If we just simply say it's important, does that give them any more information? Does it, is it, I mean, what is it?
Yeah, yeah, but I think the, I think the comment is, is that the, the, right now, um, you know, it's obviously important, uh, for us to have affordable units and if it's rental, they all count, but the fact is, is that this would be forty actual units created. That's a lot, so maybe the comment is, we don't want it to necessarily go less than forty, but maybe it's, if, if it's advantageous to change the mix, go for it. So maybe that's the, that's the one sentence, if everyone would agree with that, is that the idea is we don't necessarily want to go less than forty out of the sixty, but if it's somehow beneficial to the town in any way to change the mix of that forty, let's do that, but they're all, they're all below, they're all eighty and below. So that could be something just about that, about number five.
Right, so, okay.
That's really good, Brian, that's really helpful.
So maintain the ratio.
Of de-restriction of eighty percent and below.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, maintain a minimum ratio. So maintain a minimum of sixty-six percent or sixty percent, I think we're at sixty percent.
It's sixty-six, it's forty out of, it's forty out of sixty.
Maintain a minimum ratio, or do we want to say maintain a minimum? So let's say they say, we're gonna put it, we'll keep the forty units of affordable, but we're gonna add five more market rate units instead of the commercial.
Oh, I see which, yeah, yeah, I see.
Yeah, I don't, I would, I would not, I would not, um, negotiate away the retail or the commercial part because that, that activates the street, that will make the project more palatable for the entire town.
I, I, I don't want to negotiate that, I just want to say that, are we stuck on forty units? Are we stuck on so many percent of the total units?
The sixty, so, yeah, it's really forty units or sixty-six percent of whatever the total number is going to be.
If we want to just, two thirds of the units, regardless of the number of units, should be affordable. And we don't care what the mix of those affordables are in terms of AMI, but we want to maintain this two thirds ratio of affordable units.
I think that could be right, Dia, because say for instance, that the only way that Civico could afford to make their money targets on this project, um, would be to, um, build fewer units. Um, so it's a smaller building somehow, I, I don't see how that would help them because it changes all the revenue numbers. Um, but, um, but, because I think one of the things that the referendum group wanted was don't take away any parking, the MBTA is making it worse, you're taking away all this parking, don't take away any parking. And so the Civico would say, well, we can't, we can't afford to give the town more revenue and give the town more parking unless we do X. And does X come out of that ratio or that number of affordable units? This is where I get really confused.
Well, I, I mean, we could say both, we could simply say that, um, we, we want, we, we prefer to keep the minimum of forty units and that if any additional units are added, that we want to keep the ratio of affordable to market rate the same.
Or as clo, as close to as possible, maybe, maybe they need to create, it's possible they need, maybe the deal could be completely altered by, uh, ten more market rates, but still forty units is huge.
Yes, exactly. One way that the parking can come into this is that we're the permit granting authority for this project, right? So like, we can also then reduce the ratio of, um, cars to units, right? From point seventy-five, some five to like point five. And it sounded like the parking underground was one of the biggest costs there.
Two point eight, two point eight million dollars was.
Yeah, so we're willing to maybe do off-site parking or to reduce that ratio to point five if they can come up with different ways of providing parking off-site, like, um, Mr. Cummings was suggesting, you know, maybe building by whatever lot that was.
Everona.
So like, that, that, I feel like we could negotiate on, it doesn't have to be on-site that parking for the residents.
That's right.
So I don't know whether we have the flexibility without going through some special permits to reduce the parking level. Brian, you know this better than I.
But no, it's certainly, if, if going through the CBD special permit, that, we certainly can do that. I, I think that's exactly what people do not want, people do not want to lower that parking ratio because they feel that people, even if they only, if only certain units, that if you don't have, um, a space that you still might have a car and you're gonna have to put it somewhere. So in terms of what's been talked about, in terms of the, the negative aspects of that availability of parking, I, I don't know if the answer is to make, to make it lower.
I mean, the, 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 the studies that show that when you put in dense buildings without parking or with limited parking, you don't end up with excess parking on the street. But that's not the perception in Winchester. So we are, we're gonna have to battle the perception that there isn't sufficient parking and that people will be irresponsible. Um, so I, I, but let's, let's, so, yeah, so trying to, trying to get us to um, something on, so I, I, I think that we, I don't, we, so in terms of saying something about bargaining points for number five, are we, are we, again, are we okay saying that we want to maintain a minimum of forty units? And that if there are additional units that are required to, additional market units are required to make it financially viable, that we would like to increase the number of affordable units commensurally.
Right, to keep the ratio.
To keep the ratio, is that something the board can agree to?
Yeah, but then, then wouldn't you have to change the building design and height and all of that?
They might be able to, if they, if they've got sixty units, adding another ten units, maybe they shrink some. Maybe they, I don't know how they would do that.
No, I think Cheryl's right, that it would have to increase the size of the building and since the footprint is set, it would add a floor to the building and right now it's three stories, correct?
Uh, they could take away some of the commercial space.
But if we decided that that was an important part. But if we decided that that was an important part of our urban planning philosophy to not take that away, um, but they said that the viability of the project is compromised unless they can add more market rate, and we said, well, we want to maintain the sixty percent, sixty-six percent, and they said, okay, well, only way we can do that is to make the building taller, which is a design decision.
So does this board, is this, so this is the shortest of the projects that were presented? Of all the proposals, this is the shortest one. So this comes down to, is this board think that height is more important than commercial space?
See, I think that it depends on where it is. On this particular lot, because of the way. I know, but it, it, this is not a, uh, we're not, I'm not answering this as a blanket statement. I'm saying in this particular circumstance, the way this building lies in town, you know, it's tucked in against the backwoods, backing up to Range Lee Park, and it's next to the train, so it's tucked back in there. And i- i- if, if, if a story were added, what would be the visual impact on the town? And would there be an impact on the town that, which is a historic resource and so on? Would that trigger other things?
So, so let's ask that question. How many people think that adding an extra story to this building is an acceptable compromise if they need to add more units?
So I wasn't around when this was, this building was being reviewed. Did, did they go for a special permit in terms of the FAR and the, and the height of the building or anything along those lines?
I don't think so.
Brian, did the RFQ specify FAR?
Uh, no, but, um, they certainly didn't, um, it, it, it was, they, they had the lowest height. I can get those heights in a minute.
But this is also a PUD, isn't it? So it could, it could really become three point oh if they wanted.
Right, it could go, it, it, exactly. It could go to three point oh. It's in, it is in a PUD, I, um.
So in that case, Sally, I think it's just, you know, are, are we willing to negotiate design? Because already it's not, it was not special permitted and, and we could certainly look at different designs that might be appropriate for that site and need a special permit. So, you know.
But that would only be, uh, uh, on the table because they felt they couldn't get the revenue to the town or the availability of public parking.
Right. So whatever they need to do to increase revenue to the town, we're saying as the planning board, we would be, we would be open to, you know, special permit review because it's within the center business district, which is what we, what, you know, we've just put design guidelines in for, and we understand our master plan. And so we would certainly, you know, obviously with a parking study that's underway, we would, we would have more and more information towards, um, making new and better decisions from a planning standpoint in terms of number two, right? And they're gonna juggle all their, their, um, forty Bs and their, you know, their market versus.
Yeah.
Affordables and.
Okay.
I mean, can we?
So.
Does the planning board have the, is it in, within our jurisdiction to say the mix has to be X? That's like a stupid question, being that I've been on the board for a little while here.
Yes, it is definitely.
It's not a stupid question.
It's within our purview. We've already said in the zoning that you have to have a certain percentage in the CBD, and we can certainly say for this project that we have to have that.
Yeah, and that's, that we're gonna withhold that no matter what, but we will.
Town land. We can set the rules on town land. So we are, we are still running up against time.
Yes, we are.
And I don't know how to resolve this, so.
Are you, by, by open meeting law, are you allowed to send a draft through Brian to us?
No.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, you, he, he, he could send it, he could send a draft that he writes, but you can't comment on it, so that, no, is, I mean, there'd be no point to it. Um, so I think what, what would happen here is that you can either, you can, um, you know, you can vote to have, uh, Dea and I kind of gather the sentiments that we've talked about tonight, summarize this evening, and put that into a memo. Um, you know, that, that's, that's something that's possible. Um, I don't, to be honest, I don't.
I don't know what the sentiments are. I don't, I don't gather consensus. Other than that, we want to have, the only thing I think is uncontroversial is we don't want to drop below forty units. But that's about it.
Right. We didn't want to drop below forty units, and we didn't want to drop below sixty-six percent of all the units being.
I'm not sure that that was agreed upon. So how many people agree with the, no more, no less than forty units? Raise your hands.
Forty percent, is that what you mean?
Forty, forty. Forty, you, forty out of sixty. It's forty right now.
Currently, we have forty units.
Okay.
So how many people agree that forty units is the minimum that we would accept?
I'm not sure that that would win, that would win the town, the thing, is the thing. I, we, we, we couch this whole thing, saying that we want to be able to push this forward so that it doesn't get another revote. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure that that, for me, I, that, that would not be a vote for me. Like, I, I just don't know if that's, that's where I could want to, the, the hill I want to die on.
Yeah, well, I guess the other question is, what is so important to us that we are not willing to, that, that, we have to set some constraints?
I, I would say that, what I would like is to just have this go forward. Like, this cannot.
But if they were to drop it to, if they were to drop it to twenty units affordable.
That's still about twenty-five percent.
I don't know. Maybe they'll have to, they drop it to twenty units affordable and they add an extra ten market rate.
I mean.
There, there's a, there's a.
Well, there, there.
That I would find that I could.
That sounded like that was where people wanted to negotiate, was like, hey, let's make it fewer affordable.
Yeah, more parking and fewer affordable and more oversight.
See, I.
No, I, I wish it wouldn't either, but I, I would rather it that than to have it just stall for another two, three, four years.
But I think that we're, 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 I think we're giving away the farm in the, in, and I know, I don't think that it is as dire as this. I think it's certainly possible to negotiate with Civicco to get a better deal without having to compromise on our statements, our value, which is that we want a significant number of affordable units on this property. And I don't think saying simply, give us some affordable units and add some parking, and we're okay with whatever you do to make it go forward, because if it goes forward in a form that is that, that violates our principles, then what's the point? So I, I am not in favor of simply saying go forward without putting some constraints.
The, the planning board at the time voted, voted in part for, that, for Civicco to move forward, basically because it had the lowest height at forty to forty-eight feet. Forty, sorry, forty to forty-eight, correct, at the lowest height, at the most amount of public parking. And it had an attractive design and the most amount of affordability.
Right.
That, so that, that's why you voted for it. Um, that's why a lot of other people voted for it.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't want to talk about the levers that should be pulled, maybe, may, I mean, or you, or, you know, there, there doesn't seem to be consensus. I think the, the, maybe the message is merely, really more going towards Civicco was the clear winner of the RFP. Um, you know, keeping the design and the, the scale of the building is clearly important. That was the part of the reason it was the lowest height. So that, that was clearly a priority.
Huge.
So, so the idea is that, um, you know, if it's gonna be completely altered outside of those things, then, then I think that does open up the select board to, to look at other avenues if it's completely different from why it was chosen. So I, I, the point is not to change the project completely.
Right.
Um, it's really to, the, it's around the edges to make the deal a little bit beggar, better, so.
So, so the language would be to remind the task force of those four components of the plan that Brian just mentioned, and to underscore the importance of maintaining the envelope of those decisions or the reasons for those decisions.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't know what that, about what Kurt was saying about how, you know, the developer fees can be paid out over time and that's the upfront stuff. And that's, that's, you know, number, whatever it was, the, uh, the, the revenue to the town, six, number six, that I don't have the skillset to understand that could be a real negotiating tool for select board.
I think Lynn Sweet is on top of that. I mean, that's why she's been hired to do this, and that's.
I just want to make sure that whatever we do to increase the, oh, to, to increase the revenue to the town, um, doesn't drop the nature of the project below the threshold that we love.
What Brian was saying, that we love the project. I mean, the projects, we, it, we were totally behind. So like, if, if you could figure out a way to, to deal with the finances somehow to get it better for the town, yeah.
Kurt, does that seem inconceivable?
No, I, that, it seems like that's the message everyone's coalescing around, which is that it's like a re-endorsement of the project with an, with like an understanding that, you know, if there's a way to, to generate more revenue for the town while not not altering some of these critical elements that everyone was very supportive of, then, you know, that, that would be a great outcome. Like, we're supportive of that.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I, I mean, to be honest, if I got that recommendation from, from this board and I were on the select board, I would say this doesn't help me at all, because all you're doing is telling me, do what you can. And so this board doesn't seem to want to say here's something that we feel you could adjust, you know, or, you know, I, I don't.
No, I think what we're saying, Dea, is, is we, we don't want there to be a reduction in the number of affordable units on the property, um, because that'll have a negative effect on the town. Um.
I don't hear this board saying that. I hear this board saying that do what you can to get better, to make this more affordable. And if you need to tweak some of the details, go forward, but we're not giving anyone any, any certainty as to which details we think shouldn't be tweaked.
Well, there's a lot of details in, in number six that Kurt was alluding to that I don't have any.
Let's, right, but let's look at the details we do understand. Let's look at the number of units. This board can't agree whether we should put a minimum of forty units on this property. So I don't know what sort of statement we are making. We're saying do something.
Brian, going back to the very original request for proposals, um, in which the town sent out to the Ethernet a call for companies to come forward to deliver this thing, did it specify in this thing the number of units?
No. No, it didn't, it didn't specify a number of, of, of units. It said, um, you know, you got a certain number of points for the level of affordability.
Okay, good.
And they, they can show this real quick.
This is helpful.
Okay, I'll make this, so.
Is this, did you fix the numbers in the Civicco line?
Yeah, so private is forty-five and the public is forty. So, so here, here's the number in percent of deed restricted units. Um, so you can see the percentages. So sixty-six was the most, um, but, um, you can see kind of the trade-off of as, uh, and, and most of this is really in the details of how they're getting their financing and whether it's those eighty percent units, sixty percent units, or thirty percent and below units. So, so that's kind of where that is. But you can see everyone, for the most part, came out with around forty percent and above.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so this is just what, what people came out with, that, that penciled out for all of them. So, so all these numbers, in theory, penciled out for them at, at some level. Um, and the only reason they made Civicco different was because of that underground garage at a cost of, of two point eight million dollars. Like I said, that allowed this height of such a low, allowed such a low, a low height.
That's true. Nobody else thought they could dig that hole.
They just didn't want to get involved, uh, for whatever reasons, but, um.
It's, it's really, going underground for parking is really expensive.
Yeah, it's about.
Also going underground next to a giant wall that supports a train track. I can't even.
And it's a major sewer easement to Deer Island.
But, but, I mean, let's, let's focus on the fact that the other proposals did not provide very much public parking. And so they dealt with not having, not putting in the underground by simply not adding parking.
Not only that, but even like the NOA, NOAA one, like twenty-nine out of fifty-five is not point seven-five. So they didn't provide point seven-five parking per unit, even there. So what I, I would say, Dea, to, to your point is that, yes, I could, I could say I wouldn't want to negotiate on the forty units, but I would be able to negotiate on the availability of public pa- parking, or, I'm not public parking, but on the, um, percentage of parking per unit. Point seven-five, I could go lower and just say, look, figure out, you, you're right next to the train station. We have bikes. Uh, we, we could do car sharing, like, we, we need to invest in infrastructure to get that, those things going. Like, we, point seven-five is huge.
It is.
Or we could just do it off-site, figure out a way to do it off-site and not dig underground.
So, so maybe what, I mean, again, I think we're running into the point that Brian put up, is that there will, there's very little public sentiment for reducing the number of parking spaces.
But even from yesterday's meeting, they were saying, you know, we could do, why, why can't we think about this parking right next to the train tracks?
Uh, we could do that, but there's, that would not be, I can't see how this would be part of this proposal.
Wait, you see, are you talking about the two, the two-tier garage in the Everzone?
Yeah, yesterday they were saying like that was, that was a possibility, that, that one and the other would go at the same time.
Yeah, I, 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 I think the engineer and I are less, uh.
Optimistic.
Enthusi, yeah, a less enthusiastic about, I, I mean, I, obviously that would be great. It's a great location, uh, the, just the, uh, right, right now, I, I don't see that as a vi- as a viable option, um, that's, that, that's worth the money.
So Dea, you said something very sage a little bit ago, which was that Civicco didn't create this problem, and the water field lot project is not gonna solve the problem um, of parking in the downtown. Um, so the main thing is to make sure it doesn't make it, that developing the water field lot doesn't make it substantially worse. And this is the best of all the proposals that came in for addressing the problem.
I think there's also a value proposition. Is it, is it worth more to us to have more affordable housing in this lot than it is to the, there's a value proposition in terms of the amount of affordable housing versus the loss of parking. And I don't know that, again, I, we're, we're now really.
Well, that's the prioritizing. I, I mean, I, may I make a motion to, to authorize you, Dea, to send a letter to the planning, to the, to the task force by the deadline of the sixteenth?
Well, unfortunately, the only thing I think I can say is that the planning board, uh, for the reasons the planning board voted to approve, to, to recommend the Civicco project and to, both at the time of the selection process for the projects and also prior to the meeting, the vote on the LDA town meeting, that we still hold that those core principles or the core properties of the project that Brian noted are still relevant. And that our, uh, main priority is to maintain a high level of affordable units. Um, that the mix of units is, is uh, you know, that, without the, the mix of the units, of the actual affordable units can vary according to whatever brings the best revenue to the town. But that we don't want to ness, we, we would be uncomfortable if the total number of affordable units decreased below what it is now. That would be what I think the board is saying. So I'm not.
I have no problem with that statement.
Okay.
But, 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 but the caveat is that I don't know if we even have to.
Well, let's just.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Let's, okay, is, is Cheryl or Yiching, is that statement acceptable?
That sounds fine to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and Kurt, I know you don't get a vote, but you do have an opinion. Is that an acceptable statement? I'm trying to compromise here.
Yeah.
And Cheryl?
Sure.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll go back and review the Zoom, because I did not take notes. We'll review the recording, and then I will write something up and Brian and I will work on it, and, uh, I guess we're working on it tomorrow. In between everything else. Okay, so we now have, um, so thank you. I really wish we had more time to do this, but that's the schedule we were given. So we have another tight schedule, which is, um, on the, um, American Recovery, the ARPA thing, whatever it's called.
Rescue.
American Rescue Something Act. So, um, Brian, if you could switch over to that part of the, of packet so people can review it. So the idea is.
I have a question.
Uh, I'm sorry.
It's just Nancy. I'm sorry.
Oh, hi Nancy, yeah.
Hey Nancy.
Hi Sally.
Hi Sally. Um, Sally made a motion, but no one seconded it.
Oh, I actually asked if I asked if 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 I should make a motion.
Oh, well, yes, please do make that motion and and just the motion that you made, which was to ask to have me and Brian work on the statement.
Yeah, I I make a motion that the planning board authorized Deeb and Brian to to produce a letter. To deliver to the task force for the Waterfield Lot, um, that defines our priorities. Based on the discussion in this evening's meeting, period.
And is there a second?
Second.
That's Yicheng's second roll call vote, please. Um, Sally Dale?
Aye.
Yicheng Scott?
Aye.
Cheryl Wolf?
Aye.
Yujurius, aye. Okay. So, um, thank you for bringing that up, Nancy. Appreciate you putting this on the toes, our toes, someone's toes. So, um. There, the the town manager has asked. Boards to submit requests for funding to use up some of the six point eight million dollars at Winchester. Is purportedly slated to get as part of the ARPA. And um, there are a number of categories which we can ask money from. Under and the first is COVID nineteen mitigation and prevention, which I don't think is under our purview. Uh, the next, Brian, if you could continue scrolling. Is uh behavioral healthcare, again, not under our purview, assistance to households. Uh, not really under our purview. Uh, keep scrolling, please. Uh, small business and nonprofits. Certainly, we do have an interest in um economic development. And um. So that is possibly something that we could talk about. The next is number five, housing. Certainly affordable housing is part of our purview, part of housing. And education is, I don't think, our purview, I believe, and then infrastructure, not our purview. So of the uh, so the two categories that we should consider, I think that's it, yep.
If you look at the number four, it's to adopt safer operating procedures. To weather periods of closure or to mitigate financial hardship resulting from COVID. And so those are not related to our economic development.
No, but technical, it's really in the technical assistance, uh, counseling and other services to assist with the business planning needs. So. There's a number of different studies that are going on right now. Uh, one is that when I was talking about the. Uh, rapid recovery plan. So this is in form of the technical assistance that we are, um. This is this small group of downtown uh businesses and also, um, Deeb, I believe, has also. Been invited and potentially one other planning board member. That was one thing we haven't talked about, but the idea is that there's going to be some type of. Uh, an action plan of some kind that's come out of it. So some of some of this money that we could be requesting could be to. To activate that 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 plan. So this would um. So that that would be a way to help the businesses. Um, so that's, that's where that would, that's where that would go.
And is our goal to be able to, oh, look, it doesn't work with my 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 blur. I'm sorry, but this is the third page of the handout. Is it our goal to um? Provide guidance for the filling out of this form?
So this is what we've we've been asked by the town manager to fill this out. Um, the the small concern I have is that we haven't really been given a ton of uh boundaries. In terms of how we should be looking through this, meaning. There are six point eight million dollars that is, that is going to go to the town of Winchester. Um, and do we have, you know, what should our funding requests be based on? Should we look for small projects, medium projects, big projects? Should I I I mean, like, there's nothing. So it's like, there's probably going to be a lot of departments and other boards and committees that are going to say, hey, we could use this funding for. You know, um. All those other categories, right? So the idea, I think the 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 problem that I had here and I gave, I'd given Deeb a list of. Kind of ideas that I thought they're what I would consider a little lower hanging fruit when it comes to the. Really, really more housing aspect. And the only reason I wanted to focus on the housing aspect is this federal money. That's coming in the form of ARPA, that's, that can be used to. Uh, you know, look at affordable housing developments. I mean, it's exactly what we're talking about right now to make the Waterfield Lot. More viable, uh, is is that these things are so hard uh to get through because of this reason. In in part, and the state helps out a lot. And uh, like Kurt said, that there's money to be made. Um, but the point is, is that we we could use this for a number of different housing developments in town, one being the Waterfield Lot. Another being, um, it hasn't been talked about this in quite some time, but we have now have a duplex lot. Off the co- off of North Border Road that was as part of the development agreement. Uh, with um, the Highland Ave subdivision with Craig Miller. So we have a duplex lot that's off of North Border Road. That, you know, we have the lot, it's ready, it's ready to go. We just need to write a quick RFP and and get somebody in there. Maybe it needs a little bit of money to jumpstart it. We're not talking about a million dollars here. We're talking about a little little bit of money to jumpstart it. So so that, I mean, there's a lot of little things. It's a question. There's no boundaries and that's the problem.
Well, so so two two ideas come to mind immediately. One is that we would ask for a certain amount of money, say it's. I don't know how much it costs to build a duplex. Say it costs seven hundred thousand dollars to build a duplex. We would ask for seven hundred thousand dollars to build a duplex? Is that the idea?
We know, no, we would not do that.
We would ask for probably a hundred, hundred fifty to make it to offset the cost of the affordability units.
There's a number of ways we could, we we could do this. It's not like we would, we we would, um, it's potentially um servicing, you know, some some debt. So, uh, you know, using that money for some debt service, uh, depending upon what we would be doing, but um. We we would just potentially give that land to a developer in order to, so the cost would be nothing to the developer for the land. Uh, and they would be able to build a duplex. I mean, that's that's worth a lot. Uh, it's a question of how much more money we would need to put into that.
Does that have access to town services, that lot? Like town sewer, town water?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's ready. We we we, so as part of the development with Highland Ave, we made them tie out. So there, so that, so it's red, so that lot's ready to go. I mean, that's a low hanging, yeah, in my, in my, in my opinion. That is something that is ready to go. Um, that the infrastructure is there currently. We just need to write an RFP and maybe that's, you know. Five thousand dollars, I don't know, five to ten, we're talking little money here. And then potentially, you know, the whole project of developing that. Um. You know, I I I don't know exactly what what the cost could be. Uh, for that, we have a little bit more time on 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 this one, but um. But I mean, if we wanted to focus on that duplex lot off of North Border Road. I I I would love to focus on that one. That seems like a very easy one that is ready to go.
Really quickly, though, on the, just, I I only know this in the context of my role and and habits of humanity. I mean, that that would be an example that. Like, the way their model works is, I mean, they go to towns like Winchester, they get a donation to a piece of land, and then. They take it from there. So there's not usually, I think, like the model you're sort of laying out, I think that is typically how it works, and I don't think there really is any ongoing cost beyond by that RFP process in like an ideal world. I think you probably have groups like that that can just take the land and that's all, that's all they need.
Exactly.
So why don't, so that's an easy one, then. So then we can write down five thousand bucks to write an RFP for.
Or I would, I would never, I would, I would never go so low in general, but I mean, it, um, but I, the meaning that mo- most, um, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I I would certainly pad that, uh, it be for more me, for more meetings and and in general, but. It's a question of what do we want to ask for? Just for the writing of the RFP or something related? You know, if it's not just giving the land. Um, you know, that it's it's unclear what that deal will be because that actually lies with the select board in terms of. Uh, because that's town owned land. It's not tech, meaning that it's not under our jurisdiction. It still would be something through. The select board and and eventually the zoning board of a um, of appeals potentially.
But let's be really clear, Brian. We don't have to go into that much detail.
No, we don't.
No, we just have to have, no, we have to have a number that makes sense, uh, that we have to have a number that makes sense. So I I would say specifically for the writing of this RFP. I would say um somewhere in the ten, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
Say fifteen.
Um, and then beyond beyond that, I don't, I don't know how much the board would would be interested in.
Well, let's just say fifteen K for an RFP for North Border Road. So that's.
It would go out to, uh, the the RFP is requesting developers to make a proposal to develop. Two deed restricted units of housing on that land. And with the, not with the idea that we would give them the land, is it?
Yeah, I mean, I I think that is the idea.
It is the idea, okay, okay.
We don't care. All we care about is what we can get done in the next. Ten minutes.
Well, that.
I have another suggestion too, but let's finish this one first.
I I think that that this one is fleshed out enough. So if the board is happy, we could move on to another one.
We need to make a motion to authorize Brian to fill out the form.
Let's just, let's just move through.
So so the other thought I had is the really big project is Holton Street and. I, Brian, I don't know what work has been done to date to to do visioning and RFP development around Holton Street. But it's a big, you know, carrot out there of of.
Hold on a sec, that that is not, but that that would not be covered under ARPA. Um, so so the the Holton Street is not really, the the idea for the future of Holton Street is not for it to be housing focused. Or even affordable housing focus. It's it it the focus is supposed to be high tech.
Oh, okay, good.
Robotics, basically where housing is very subservient to to a commercial and research and technology kind of area.
Um, okay. Thank you for that clarification. I think I missed that. Thank you.
So let's um.
Let's just do the one.
Well, no, there are others that.
There's, yeah, there's certainly, there's certainly, there's one sixty forest and I I don't know how much really. Money is associated with that. Um.
I don't know what that is.
It's a single family house, that one, that was.
That was a single family house that was um deeded. Or not deeded, it was given to the town through an estate. And there are liens on the property that need to be paid off. So that would um definitely be a target. Also, uh, Glenwood Avenue, which is the.
Twenty Glenwood, yeah.
Twenty Glenwood, which is a small two thousand some square foot lot. Which um, the town is working on on an RFP.
Um, that, yeah, that RFP is not done, but but, yeah.
But certainly that would be another affordable housing one. Uh, the the LLR, the uh, local.
Rapid Recovery Plan.
Rapid Recovery. Um, Brian, you had some interesting language when we discussed this last week, which was essentially to. Um, request funds to implement what their suggestions would be. And this is a plan, in in terms of how this fits in with the planning board. Um, Brian uh was was key in getting a lot of these grants that were came in during the. Uh, the end of last year and the beginning of this year. So it's definitely part of the planning board's economic development hat. Or portfolio. So what was the language you came up with there, Brian?
It was, yeah, use of funds to impl- implement key strategies of the plan.
And we don't really have an idea of how much that would be, but I'm guessing it's going to be a a hundred K.
Um, I mean, they they could be, some of them relate to the physical wor- or the physical realm. Um, meaning improvements that try to foster more business activity and and things related to parking. So, I mean, it could, it could, it could be a lot. It's a question of how much you would wanna. You would wanna, wanna do related to. It's really the LR RP and the Downtown Improvement Action Plan, the tool is doing. And it's really, I think, going towards both of those, because all that is centered around making the businesses more viable. Through more feet on the street, but also, you know, parking, parking and everything. So I I think. You, we we could say that we would want, and that actually ties something that the, you know, the select board is is doing as well that that relates to us. So we could say that. Um, put, we could lump together. Strategies from the local rapid repu- recovery plan, as well as the Downtown Improvement Action Plan, the DIAP, and just say. We should probably put a lot of this money toward towards, you know, a hundred, I would say a hundred maybe in conjunction between those two to to. Round out those strategies and uh they come out of those plans.
Okay. Um.
And and I'll just say as a sidebar that those are consonant with the master plan goals. And actions, action plan.
And it also, yeah, does it fall under investments in infrastructure? Uh, no, it does not. It's just infrastructures.
Investments in infrastructure are basically for the more rural towns, the ones specifically like North Reading. That doesn't have a municipal sewer and they can't really do these larger projects because they don't, they don't have it. So this is a, it's for those types of.
I need to look back. There was three properties that came under discussion, Twenty Glenwood, North Border Road, and what was the other?
One sixty forest.
Thank you.
So, any other ideas? I mean, we can, we can add, we can put these all in. There's no limit. I mean, this is all, we're essentially throwing ideas out. So for Twenty Glenwood, um, there's already an RFP that's in the process. So money has been spent on the RFP. Um, there might be, I don't know where the money would go to for Twenty Glenwood. Would it be? I don't know. Offsetting. Financials for building for, to make it deed restricted? I don't know. I mean, the 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 RFP for Twenty Glenwood. Emphasizes that the town wants um affordable housing there, but it does not limit it to that. So if we want to use this money to ensure that it actually is affordable housing. That's something that we could put in as a statement of. Some money to ensure that um Twenty Glenwood becomes an affordable unit.
Well, two thousand square foot lot, seems like you wouldn't be able to do much with it without going through special permit and all that through us or through ZBA.
Right, if they build on the same footprint.
Oh, there was already a building.
Yeah, there is a building which is definitely going to get removed.
And the building is like, like one story, five hundred square feet or something?
It's a smaller building, yeah.
I think it's about, I think it's about six fifty and the idea is that you could put two and a half stories on that. So it would, you know.
Six eleven.
I mean, there are.
That's huge.
Well.
There are constraints on the lot. It's a strange lot. There are parking issues. But the point is. If we want, I don't know how we put a dollar amount, but I think that we could. I don't know, I, some of these things, we're just pulling numbers out of the air.
And the verb is incentivize.
The verb is incentivize, incentivize.
So, will will we be able to use that number four, the small business nonprofits to sort of jumpstart Main Street in some ways, like? Can we, can we maybe help start to connect some things, like say, you know? I, could we, could we use some of the um consulting fees?
Certainly could for for North Main Street. Um, we do already have the ones committed right now to the technical assistance. Um, Josh Fial is going to be coming in our next meeting from MAPC that's going to be. Focusing more of the the legislation um conversation. It's a question of um what comes out of that that plan. Uh, but with this definitely could be used for here, if you see four C. Technical assistance, counseling, and other services to assist with business planning needs. So this was a large part of, you know, North Main Street is trying to make that. A more viable commercial area, walkable and has more residents.
Concerned, Brian, because the last phrase in the introduction for number four says. Resulting from COVID nineteen public health emergency.
Yep, yep.
And so I believe that the local rapid recovery program does fall under that. But North Main Street specifically does not, what we're looking at is not. The results of the COVID nineteen, it's just results of.
But you wouldn't do argue that, you know, any business, small business operating last year probably had some hardship.
Sure, I I think that, I think that's where the the mark, that's where we're talking about. So maybe it's.
Under the local rapid recovery.
No, no, sorry, the LLRRP is only focused on the downtown. It's only focusing on the businesses in the center business district.
So this would be a challenge to identify businesses on North Main Street. That have specifically experienced financial hardship.
Yep, so it could be a study, a study as part of it related to the financial hardship of it. So that they, that could be a, you know, that could be.
Yeah, and then get a, get a, like a bunch of money to help them in the same way that we're doing the CBD with the local recovery plan for North Main Street. Start to activate it.
So that's what you're talking about is about a thirty thousand dollar project. That is, that is essentially doing the LR RP for the North Main Street corridor.
So let's just call this LL, LL, LLRRP for North Main Street.
Yeah.
Thirty K.
Thirty K.
That'd be great to see some like activated sidewalks or, you know, taking parking lots to make little restaurants, whatever.
So we've got um fifteen K RFP for North Border Road. We've got implement key strategies of the LLRP as well as the Downtown Improvement Action Plan and we've. We've got implement key strategies of the L L R P as well as the downtown improvement action plan, and we've got a hundred K for that. Uh we've got incentivize Glenwood, and I don't know if we've, it's a produce affordable housing.
So I would love to hear Kurt's thoughts, I know you know absolutely nothing about it. But if you were gonna incentivize a developer to take a nonconforming lot. And a derelict structure in an existing footprint, and what amount of money would incentivize you? To make it a deed restricted property that would you would develop and sell?
And it's town land too, so that's always, we can give them the land for free.
Yeah, that's, so it's funny, I think someone at the town, I don't know who, like actually talked to the. The Habitat for Manticore or Boston folks about this lot like two years ago. Um and I think they conclude, they conclude, I think our, their their reaction was like, they don't like to do single family homes, it's just like, it's a lot of work for. To just benefit one family, they're looking to do at least two units, and I suggested, what if we did two units here, and I think the response was, you know, you can't fit two units on this lot.
But maybe with a zoning variance, you could. And it's funny because we have control of zoning variances.
Wow, we'd have to.
It would, yeah.
We don't have that much control, you're right.
It's a question, so it 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 would probably not be through us, it would probably be through the Z B A, but I think to to your, to your question and. Maybe I'll answer it a little bit, Kurt, here, is that it's something that we're talking about is waiving the building permit fees or something, some. That's what we're talking, that's what we're talking about here, is what what it, what would it do, what what's the money, there's real money in building permit fees. That is a significant cost savings if we could cover those, so that tha- that's something, and so maybe. It's an unknown number, but maybe the the ask is cover the building permit fees for. You know, if it costs two hundred thousand dollars, whatever the, whatever the fee is based upon that, you know, it's a certain number of dollars per thousand, right, so. We can figure, D E B and I can figure that out, uh you know, the cost to build one of these uh a house, a house of basically fourteen hundred square feet. A nice new house of fourteen hundred square feet would be great for a small family starting out, right, that'd be awesome. Um if we can waive the b- building permit fees and give the land, I mean, that's what this, that's what this money is be, could be used for, so.
So the key though is that the final price of the building has to be within um the deed restricted. However much that's going to be, I don't know what the mu- so the builder will have to be able to sell it for. Five hundred grand, I don't know what the final price will have to be to make it affordable.
So it's some.
It would, it would be closer to three hundred, like two ninety, something like that. That's governed, that's governed by the state, that's not.
Right, right, but the point is, whatever we give, would, I mean, I don't know how much it will cost to build this, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be. Really close to two hundred ninety thousand, so.
Usually you heard a dollars a square feet around like for new construction, isn't it? Three hundred times sixteen hundred.
It's, I would say three hundred, that's kind of what I was thinking too.
Four eighty.
Four eighty, so that's way above, so what we'd have to do is ask for the difference between, and that's just construction costs.
Uh huh, four eighty for fourteen thousand.
So for if they're gonna make, so is that, is that without profit or is that just?
Uh that's what you would pay the the construction.
Yeah, that that's what costs, yeah, I I think the three hundred number is probably a pretty good number.
Okay, so so that means the final selling price. It'll cost four hundred eighty thousand to the construction person to make it, so we need to sell it at two ninety, so the town is gonna have to come up with approximately.
No, there's still, it it depends how they're being funded, yeah, it's not that, it's not as simple as what you're talking about.
I know, but we have zit mi- minus five minutes, so.
Well, no, but we don't have to come up with the number, we have to come up with the idea.
Well, we're supposed to come up with a number, but we're not gonna be able to, we're not gonna be able to, I I I think, I think talking about sp- specifically about twenty Glenwood. Um u- using, uh D E B and I can do a quick calculation of what the bur- the building permit fees would be, I think that's a reasonable. Ask, we, I mean, this is an, again, there's no boundaries on this, we have no idea where this money is going, we're just.
I like it.
You know, so we can ask for a waiving of the building, uh the payment to the building permit fees.
So D E B, let's hear the list so that it can be turned into a motion and then we can go home.
Yes, well, we are.
We are home, that's right.
But that's okay.
Who's not home?
I'm I'm at my mom's, that's why the alarm. All the interruptions, because it's been, there've been thunderstorms here and they set off the uh the burglar alarm for some reason.
So I I don't wanna delay or add more time, can I just have one on, one other question? I mean, is, like, if you look, for example, at like the um the Civico plan, I mean, they're assuming the state wants them to make sure they get. Five hundred thousand dollars of city funds like put into that that deal um from the town of Winchester, right, so that's in their sources and uses. I don't know exactly what that source is, but I mean, is it a fair thing to say, like, we wanna request. Two million dollars of this money to be able to set aside to further subsidize future affordable housing projects in Winchester?
Uh no, I, so that's a very good question, uh John Serbeer was on earlier, he might be on, he mi- he might still be on, I'm not, I'm I'm not sure. I would imagine the Housing Partnership Board would probably say that, the source of the fund that you're talking about is an affordable housing trust, so that five hundred thousand dollars. Can only be spent upon affordable housing, that was not really relayed very well throughout the time of the referendum and everything, is that. The money that the town is giving, it's not like it can go to anything else.
We, so we already have the five hundred thousand.
So so what you're talking about is maybe we just ask for a huge lump sum to just get put into this affordable housing trust and just go to town, as they said.
Well, it would be a game changer to bring it from a a, I don't wanna use the word paltry, but from a a not necessarily. Empowering amount, game changer to bring it up to a truly meaningful number.
But is it specific enough a project, I'm concerned that if you simply say, we need to re- we need to fund. The house, affordable housing trust by giving it two million dollars, and the town manager says. Well, that's great, but what are your plans to actually use that money? John has his hand up.
He does, D E B, I'm so happy you saw the hand.
John. Tell us who you are, where you live, and why you're talking to us.
Well, for for Kurt's uh benefit, uh I chair the Housing Partnership Board, and this is a topic on our agenda for tomorrow night. Uh I had a fairly long conversation with Stacy Ward, the comptroller, uh and there are two rules. Here, uh one is that the money has to be obligated by the end of two thousand twenty four. Uh the money has to be spent by the probably, I think, she thinks it's the end of two thousand twenty six. So just putting money into the municipal housing trust uh isn't sufficient. Uh there has to be a a guarantee or a high likelihood. That the money is gonna be expended by two thousand twenty six, and so that affects uh, you know, these. Kind of just general set asides.
But we could say um ask for uh five hundred thousand dollars to go towards a Civico project.
Yeah, one of the things that the Housing Partnership Board uh will uh. Almost definitely request in our list, and I I we need to kind of coordinate these respective lists, is is. Uh contribute uh five hundred thousand dollars toward the Civico Waterfield Project.
Okay, and it doesn't help, we can't double dip, because um I'm sure if we ask for it and you ask for it.
No, no, I think, I think some of these things will be merged and combined and uh.
The double dipping will be prevented.
Yeah.
But it it may actually indicate an important, if we, if we ask for it, there's uh the two people asking for it can't hurt, two is better than one. Or two groups.
That's right.
So um with that, um so what I have for our list is a fifteen K for an RFP for North Border Road. A hundred K to implement the key strategies of the L L R P as well as the downtown improvement action plan. Waiving of building fees for twenty Glenwoods who incentivizes construction of deed restricted housing. Uh and thirty thousand for a essentially an L L R P for Main Street. So those are the, and then five hundred K. For, was it five hundred K? Yeah, five hundred K for uh Civico.
How would that work?
We would break, we would break, we would break them up into like kind of physical, I mean, they're obviously all related to housing.
No, but I meant the five hundred to Civico specifically.
It would be the towns in order to make the project more financially viable.
Oh, that the five hundred would come to Winchester in connection with the completion of the Civico project.
We would use, we would request five hundred thousand dollars to give to the Civico project.
Maybe, maybe to instead, to 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 for the part, for the underground parking that we're asking for, I mean, so I mean, you know.
Or it could waive some building fees, something.
I have, I mean, I have spoken with both the town manager Lisa Wong and with Marty Jones about. Uh supporting the Civico project, uh and basically, I'm uh, even though we only have. Two weeks left of the town manager's tenure, relying on the two of them, working with Brian. To uh to come up with a way of of utilizing that money to support Civico if it makes sense to do that. And this, these decisions will be made uh by this, by the select board, uh and so. You know, this would all be part of the 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 negotiations with the Civico that will uh get underway. During October.
So do you, so are you, are you kind of implying that there's that, since you're already working on this through the Housing um Partnership Board? That we don't really need to list it as a, as a ask from the planning board?
Yeah, I mean, my inclination would be not to list it, but you can certainly list it, and I think we wanna just make sure that we're. You know, we're, the the dollar figure we're talking about is uh is five hundred thousand, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry. On on this one, I wouldn't worry about getting too much more detailed.
So we wouldn't ask for five hundred as a duplicate, we would simply wanna put a word in in support of.
Yes.
Okay, so we would put in uh some sort of a. We would link, we would link, we would, we would put in a a a statement of support for the Housing Partnerships. Um Civico five hundred K request.
So Kurt, you getting all this? No, I'm, I, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry, he's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is as a global question or just very specific to what we're just talking?
I know, I just feel for your, I feel your pain.
No, this is really interesting.
Um D E B, can I, can I interject about the uh North Main Street thing, can we just say, like, go big and go fifty K for anything outside of the central business district? For for any of the businesses, I'm thinking Swanton Street, Cross Street, um Washington Street.
You know.
Washington Swanton, there's one.
Okay, so why don't we just, so I, you know, it's 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 free money, so let's ask for more.
Let's go, yeah.
We don't get it.
Our one black owned business in town.
So fif- fifty K for an L L R P for everything outside. Of the downtown.
You you said the commercial cent, I mean, there's so few of them, it's, but you could say the 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 small commercial centers outside of town.
Identified small commercial centers, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so I I'm I'm just writing down this idea, Brian and I will work this out over the next couple of weeks.
Oh, when's this due to her?
It's due September twenty eighth.
I think it's a twen- it's next we, it's next week, so not a couple of weeks, but we will.
Don't be talking about a couple of weeks, don't be talking that way.
Next week.
Next week is just two.
Would she be able to distribute it before she leaves?
No.
Is that her decision?
I don't, I I I can't imagine that these are going to be decided on before the October second, which is when. Beth Rudolph, who was named last night as the acting town manager, starting October second.
That was my question, that that they voted last night to appoint an acting town manager.
Yeah, I probably should have put that in my updates, uh here are, here we are at ten fifteen, um but, but yeah. But yes, October second, the current town engineer, Beth Rudolph, will be the acting town manager, uh a- as. Still as the town engineer, but she will be the acting town manager uh starting October second and.
And and did they also in that?
Promotion.
Oh, it's huge, i- i- did they say in the same breath what the action plan is, timeline for recruiting and appointing a new town manager?
No, the only thing that seemed, no, i- is is the short, the long is that uh. It's unclear what the process is currently for finding a new town manager that has not been drawn out yet.
And is it in the hands of the select board?
Hundred per- hundred percent, there's nothing in the charter that requires them to do it any certain way, they could just, they could do it any way they want.
Cool.
But I wanna draw our attention back to this list of things so that we can get a motion out and everyone can toddle off to bed, so. Um we've now got, I will say, I'm gonna draw this up and somebody please say so moved, so um the. Excuse me, the motion is to submit to the town manager. Um requests for funding from the A R P A for the following projects. With uh to be the the uh final language to be worked out between uh the chair and the town planner. Um fifteen thousand for an RFP for development of a deed restricted. Two unit affordable house on the town land on North Border Road. A hundred K to implement the key strategies of the L L R P for downtown, for the center business district. As well as the downtown improvement action plan. An amount of money equivalent to um. Like pro- building fees for the twenty Glenwood property to incentivize the construction. Of a deed restricted affordable unit. Fifty thousand to um fund the creation of an L L R P. For the small commercial spaces outside of downtown. And a statement of support for the Housing Partnership Board's request. For five hundred thousand dollars to go to the Civico, um to the Waterfield Lot. Um affordable housing project, let's call it that, so that would be the motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Somebody please.
Yes, I, yes, I seconded, I I I just, I I I need more education about L L R Ps, but I do second the sentiment in the motion.
Okay, it's the motion that counts, okay, so uh why don't we do a roll call vote, please, um Cheryl Wolf.
Hi.
Uh Yicheng Scott.
Hi.
Um Sally Dale.
Aye.
The abjurious aye, the motion passes, uh is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please, uh Cheryl Wolf.
Aye.
Yicheng Scott.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
The abjurious says aye, Kurt, I am sure that you would say aye if we could count the vote.
Thank you, Kurt, thank you, Brian, thank you, Nancy, thank you, David.
You're stealing my thunder, Sally, I get to say these things.
I know, I just feel so grateful for all these people staying up so late, D E B, I'm sorry.
That's okay, uh thank you Winchester, Wind Cam, uh thank you town of Winchester out in the peanut gallery, appreciate you listening to.